That three birdies.
All year.
Okay, it's three o'clock, we'll go ahead and stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I have just a favor before we start. We're still having some small equipment issues with the microphone, so if you can make sure that you have it very, very, you can hear it here while you can't hear it online. So make sure you got it right in your face. Uh, we do have equipment ordered, it will not be here until June 20th. John's way, we have to limp this out for a lot of companies.
Alright, so we have called a meeting to order, we had a pledge of allegiance. Go ahead.
It's, you can't hear anything online.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and we'll have a roll call in attendance, we have Bob, Doug, myself, Ed, and Carol. I need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
One request is that we remove, um, item nine B after consulting with the auditor. Uh, it's a moot point at, at now because the finding will stay the same regardless. It's statutory, we have to be, do the budget amendment within sixty days ending after the fiscal year. So that item is not necessary.
And it will not affect this year's audit?
Correct.
Or last year's audit?
Yep.
Thank you.
So it's removed?
Yes, please.
I spent all that time reading that.
Alright. So I, I need a, a, a motion to approve the final agenda. So, removed item nine B. So I have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we'll go ahead and move to public comment.
I have just one public comment and it's Rod Senior regarding a non-agenda item. Reminder, three minutes.
I'm sure before Mr. Senior comes up when the clock starts. Uh, I think there's a request by Alan Levine, the attorney with Becker Law Firm.
That's who that is, I'm like, who's Alan Levine?
Yeah, he, uh, Katie Burke, he was generally handling the matters involving the Stony Brook Association. Uh, he may be wanting to participate.
I see him, he's waiting.
Thank you.
He is online.
Thank you.
Yes.
Now or wait for the?
Wait for the item, I suggest. If that's okay with the chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
Hi Board and Staff and Neighbors. Thanks for sending your reports.
Please announce.
Rod Senior Gateway Greens, thanks. A recap, I sent it to you from my standing here two weeks ago. Chelsea, thank you for promptly treating the weeds on Lake 116. They're dying, but there are new ones growing. And there's a layer of algae and hydrilla on the water's edge. Please confirm that adequate weed, algae, and staining of the stone control is in the contractor's specifications. Um, the bigger subject is the colossal spending program associated with this entire pond bank stabilization. Is the elephant in the room? Approximate cost, thirty million dollars is earmarked by the engineers within the fifty-eight million dollar bond for this project. Ten million dollar earmarked out of the eighteen state revolving fund for this project. This roughly ten times more than the estimate Tetra Tech came out with ten years ago. Here's just a few highlights from a report I did in collaboration with Tetra Tech for, you'll remember, Ed, it's Jeff Kuntz and the Gateway Sunday those days. Um, Maurice Riley did a consultation here and they, um, they were obviously concerned about slopes. Slope's steeper than four to one and, um, vertical drop being more than nine inches, you know the story there. Forty-nine out of the sixty-nine Gateway ponds were earmarked for restoration and they tiered them one to seven in terms of priority. The total cost for the first seven worst was a million. And the rest of the forty-two ponds was estimated around four million. With, with almost ten times that now. Um, the, I want to say this, kudos to whoever it was, I assume it's Chelsea or Lee County, whoever's responsible for initiating the CDBG, uh, federal funding, particularly from this federal government. If you can get it, which I understand might be in the millions, towards this project, which I understand is in up a result of the storms, either Ian or Milton or something, but if we can get some funding like that, that's great. Let the residents know once you can. Tell them that you've got your back, that you've got their back. Um, I'm asking their supervisors if they would please make a motion, somebody, to dedicate a workshop to this entire subject of pond bank restoration. It's a huge burden on this, on this community, more than anything else you're doing. Uh, there are alternative methods to stone and Armamax, which is shut up in cost due to inflation and tariffs. It's, we don't need a catalog on every lakebank. Uh, you know, we've got eighteen miles of lakebank, uh, and we just don't need to put this treatment on every one of them. We can be surgical about it. Talked to Danny Nelson this morning, there are alternative ways to talk about, like geo-webbing, even just restoring and re-grassing. But I think it really is a good idea to dedicate a workshop.
I'm sorry, Rod, your time's up.
If somebody would make that motion, I'd really be pleased to. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
That's it.
I don't have anyone else sign up for public comment.
So, is that, I mean, gonna?
Okay.
Work achievement and recognition, do we have anything, Chelsea?
Yes, I just want to recognize, um, Nathan Alley, I sent you all an email, he provided his resignation last week. We wish him the best in his future endeavors. He was, made a huge impact in his one years.
Maybe one year and like?
Four days that he was here. Um, again, he and Daniel both will be sorely missed. Uh, their last day is, Daniel's is the twenty-eighth and then Nathan's is the thirtieth, so, um, we are actively recruiting for both of those positions. Um, but I just wanted to pass that along, that, um, he did find employment elsewhere, um, did talk to him and couldn't blame him on the offer that he was given. So, um, we wish him the best.
Do you know if he was recruited or whether he was solicited?
Pardon?
Was he, Nathan, was he recruited or did he?
He was recruited.
Was he looking?
He was recruited.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Chelsea, they, they always say bad news comes in threes, is there anything else?
I was hoping you wouldn't say that. Nothing, nothing, nothing now.
Nothing as of this moment in time?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other thing, um, we did have the, I don't know what we called it, the eggs.
The Easter egg hunt.
The Easter egg hunt, um, it was a night Easter egg hunt with flashlights. Um, had a huge turnout, um, I think it was a great success, um, had some golden eggs. Carrie did a fantastic job at organizing that event, um, and we look forward to have an egg venture. We look forward to continuing having those in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So go ahead and move to advisory committees and items to report.
Uh, I move on agenda items eight, A, B, C, and D. And Patricia Zimmerman is here with us in the audience, maybe she could just stand up so you could see who.
I don't think we have a D.
Seven C.
Oh, because you went all the way to D.
Oh, did I say D? Yeah, I meant C.
I'm looking for it too.
A, B, C.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion by Carol, um, second by Bob, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Patricia, just want to wave.
You're approved. You're official.
Welcome.
Alright, approval of minutes?
I move on, um, minutes for agenda items eight, A, B, and C.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second for approval of the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent the agenda items.
Just one question I'd like to ask on that one.
And Ed, I do have Tetra Tech online for your question.
Steven online?
No, we have Tim and Alec, oh, Steven is online.
I, I looked at those and I've done a lot of this over the years. The bid of the low bid, in fact, it's not the low bid, the low two bids seemed extremely out of line with the other prices. What I couldn't find was a lineal footage description of what, how many feet we're doing to be able to come up with what their unit price is. But, uh, when I've got bids that are a hundred and three, a hundred and fifty-four, a hundred and fifty-four, and a hundred and sixty-nine, that looks to me like that would be where, where, where we ought to be or should be in that neighborhood. When somebody is bidding almost half of that, uh, scares me to death. What, what do they know that we don't know, uh, that they would bid it for this price? Uh, I just don't want to have them coming back and screaming change order right and left.
And I would like to echo what Ed is saying. Four out of these seven bids are more than double what the base bid was for the person, for the company that's being recommended. More than double, and the highest one is four times more. Uh, that just doesn't make sense to me and it rings that there's something here that we're not catching.
Well, my, my question would be is did, did we call National and ask them, you are, indicate to them, you are obviously immensely low. Uh, how are you proposing to do it? My biggest problem is I didn't know what the quantity was. Are we talking about five thousand lineal feet, ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand? Uh, is this, it worked out to be a dollar fifty cents a foot, three dollars a foot, whatever, all the numbers that I'm familiar with. I don't have any way to compare that, but alls I, I do with what Carol said is I look at it, I always throw out the whole, the high bid. Somebody will always bid a high bid in this kind of work, thinking that if things fall their way, they're going to hit a goal mine. Uh, so, so, don't worry, don't worry about the high bid, but boy, when I see one fifty-four, one oh-three, one sixty-nine, and one fifty-four, I'm thinking somewhere around one fifty-four is a pretty reasonable number and we're half of that.
Steven or Tim? Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, hey, this is Tim Vander Walker, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I, I appreciate your concern and, and understand where you might be coming from with that. To answer your first question, we are looking at around twenty thousand linear feet of pipe, um, to do this. Uh, National Water Main, we have worked with on, uh, with other users and, um, on different projects. Uh, we just recommended them for a ward, um, with another, uh, one of our clients down in that area. So, a- and we did check references on that. Um, so, you know, there's really no concern there in terms of, um, them being able to perform the work. Um, you know, if, if you want us to go with the, the, the middle bidder instead of the low bidder, um, you know, that's, I guess that's definitely an option. But, um, as far as our estimating for prices goes, um, we are around that dollar fifty a linear foot for the, the cleaning and the CCTV, um, each. So I guess that'd be three dollars total per linear foot, uh, but then you also have mobilization, uh, general requirements and permitting and maintenance of traffic and things like that where, you know, there might be some variance, variation between the different bidders, um, as far as that goes. So, um, hopefully that answers your question. Um, like I said, we've checked references, um, we've reviewed their bids and, you know, they had the same documentation in front of them that everybody else had. So we'll hold them to that as the project gets underway, uh, with the intent that there would be no change order for anything that would be included in that original specification.
Okay, two, two, two questions. One, uh, did they, uh, uh, in their past history and other projects that you're familiar with them, did they have any history of, uh, coming back and change ordering for this, that, and the other?
Not that I can recall. Um, we've had them, you know, doing different things here and there. Um, we've had, had them on a big manhole ceiling and coat project, but also, you know, we know that they've done lining and, and different things like that beyond just the cleaning and CCTV and, um, and I don't recall anything to that.
Okay, and then the other one is do they, did they make any indication that they're subcontracting this work out, uh, at, to an extent that's greater than fifty percent?
I don't believe so, I, I believe they self-perform that work, um, and they do have, um, crews that they're, they're bringing in. Um, I believe they bring their crews in from out of town, but it is self-performed.
Okay, well, if they're doing the work, I, I don't have any problem, I just don't want them subcontracting out fifty, sixty, seventy percent of this to somebody that, uh, is behind the scene and we don't know anything about.
When, when Pelican did it and it has been a while, but we were in the, we were within ten percent of this price, now it's been a few years ago. But the two dollar range to three dollar range is an appropriate cost. I don't know what you're going to get for the three hundred thousand.
Yeah, I don't know what, what size the pipe is.
But sticking the probes in and getting the videos, and every video comes to its own disc, and we were very happy with what we got.
Yeah, I think, if they can do the work and do it for this price, then it's definitely to our advantage to, to, to.
Yeah, it's not rocket science.
You know, I don't want, don't want to go out and try to find a reason to throw them out, I just want to make sure that we don't get back and find out that we're holding the, the bad stick when, uh, they start asking for change orders.
And Madam Chair, uh, just one, one quick question. Um, with your previous experience with National, you have seen them through final completion of previous work?
Tim.
Tim.
What was that, sorry?
With your experience. With your, with, with your previous experience with National, you have seen them all the way through final completion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Tetra Tech is recommending a, award to National Water Main, National Water Main Cleaning Company.
So move.
So we have a motion in a second, second by Doug, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright.
So who's going to present, Tim's going to go over District Engineer projects?
No, Steven will.
Good afternoon, everyone, Stephen Agathe, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Um, I have the task authorization update for y'all. Yeah, the first project up is irrigation pump station generator. The contractor has resubmitted their building permit and, uh, the status as of this morning was building had signed off on it. The next step is for fire review and electrical, um, and there should be no issues there, so hopefully we'll have a permit in hand, uh, over the next couple of weeks. I believe the generator has been scheduled to be delivered with bill, so that should be getting dropped off over the next couple of weeks also. Irrigation enforced main improvements, um, we're still working with, uh, staff to try to get some grant funding for these projects or through SRF, so stay tuned for that. Lower Hawthorne well, contractors are going to be back out on site over the next month to wrap this project up. Uh, Gateway Utility Storage Building, I'm sure you guys noticed that there's some vertical construction happening, so that project is moving along. Phase two, year two lakebank restoration, this is Met Towers Lake one twenty-seven and one thirty. They are substantially complete, we are working on paperwork and one last punch list item for irrigation and some sod at one location. So those two should get removed from the, removed from this list before the next meeting, they're, they're done. Um, FY twenty-four lake construction management, MRI is wrapping up one oh-five, one twenty-five, and one twenty-eight over probably this week or maybe some of next week. And that'll leave, uh, Lake fifty-seven and Stony Brook to be the last lake to be completed on that project. FY twenty-five lakebank, um, this is Lake ninety-eight and ninety-nine. Uh, C and B is substantially complete on both of their lakes, uh, we're just working on punch list items to get that closed out. Met Tower is currently working on Lake one oh-nine, they should be installing rock tomorrow and through next week. And then they will move over to Timber Ridge, Lake ninety-four, over the next couple of weeks. Uh, Public Works Storage Building, um, no new updates there, I believe Chelsea's waiting for a change order and a TA for that one, we're working on that. The Gateway Commons Park and Admin Building, we do have good news that the permit was awarded. I believe there's just some paperwork left for the contractor to, to do and maybe some other stipulations that have to get done, but the building review has been completed and approved.
Pause real quick, Steven. You'll see over the next week, OAK is starting to mobilize to the site, so you'll see construction fencing go up. Um, and you may have already seen their construction trailer on site.
Uh, for, for the FTA interconnect, that project is getting close to being wrapped up, we're just waiting on the fence and final punch list items. Uh, CCTV sewer, we just talked about, that bid has been, um, approved. And then Storm is out to bid right now, I believe we got a couple of comments or questions that have been addressed or we're in the process of addressing. Uh, Pelican Lakes forty-seven and forty-eight, Brad started work, Extreme Diver started work on PP forty-seven last week and they are just moving along with that project. Uh, development updates, um, Chelsea, I guess like the only update here really would be Santa Luz. Um, we're currently working through some items with our lawyer and their lawyer, I'll just leave it at that.
Tony, go ahead.
Yeah, on that, we had a, uh, April eleventh, I think, seems like forever ago. We, we had a, a good conference call with the council, two councils, Inhouse and Kelly Price Johnson for Lenar Goes Home. You know, and Chelsea and Steven and myself. And we understood much better, we, uh, why some of the issues involved and tried to work out a solution to carve this out from a pending issue that they're, Lenar's having with the association on a five-five-eight claim that's been made. Don't want to go into great detail here.
Non-pond issues, correct?
Uh, this is included apparently in that, in that.
I'm sorry?
This apparently issue is included in that claim. So, that's why I don't want to have this.
How can they bind us to something that they?
That's why I didn't want to talk.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, give me a holler, I'll give you a call tomorrow, how's that? That's okay. Uh, so anyways, they're, we're working on, and I sent a follow-up email to Kelly, asking about the status, about her contacting the attorney for the association to try to do a carve-out for this and try to resolve it. Because Lenar indicated you were willing, correct me if I'm wrong, Chelsea, to do the work and Chelsea kept emphasizing dry season, dry season, dry season, and that's why we are where we are now because they said last year, dry season, dry season, they would do it and they did not. So it was, I think we got our point across very well, I think they much better under, they well understood the issues the district's having. Uh, and so I think they, it's a good step towards resolution in my opinion.
Time is of the essence, that was emphasized.
We, we don't have, you know, haven't run across the plate yet to score, but I think it made good progress, I thought that they called.
And the only other update with the development updates is Garrett FM is moving quick. Um, between Tetra Tech and staff, we've had many onsite inspections of them installing the utility lines. So, um, they are progressing with that development up there at the Commerce Room now. So, they've been great to communicate with and, and work with, so.
I want to make sure I understand this deal, Tony, I'm, uh, in constant contact with the president at that, uh, Santa Luz two. Uh, and that, that board is green. They, they, they got a tiger by the tail. Uh, I was not aware that they had done, what is it called, a five-eighty-eight?
No, no.
Five-fifty-eight?
Five-five-eight, and, and again, I, I don't want to have a detailed discussion here on that, Ed.
Okay, well, I'm, I was not aware of them doing this, but I wasn't aware of what this is anyway. But I just want to make sure that we're not mixing apples and oranges here.
No, we're not, we're, yeah, we're trying to obtain a resolution to get the district's issue addressed. Uh, and, and it was a little more complicating factor and, uh, okay, anyways.
You talk, Howard.
Yeah.
Okay, back to the administrative building, so you have the permit?
Yep.
In hand, so what does that mean then?
Uh, they're going to be starting next week.
Next week?
Yep.
Okay. And they're anticipating how long?
April, April twenty-sixth.
A year from now?
Yes. Steven, did you have anything else?
That's it for me.
I, I talked to you, Chelsea, earlier today, um, obviously with Dan and Nathan gone. Inspection of this project is critical. Uh, want to make sure that we're on this thing and things seem to happen around here that don't happen anyplace else. Uh, I want to make sure.
The admin building?
Yeah, the new building.
We've got Holmontes doing the, the vertical, and we've got Tetra Tech doing
Site work.
The site work, so we've got full-time inspection services on it. And I am planning on having a security camera installed at the pool to oversee the site. Thank you, thanks, Steven.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
Hey Steve, Steve, one question. Uh, Rod, Rod left, uh, early and I wanted to follow up on his deal. Uh, I don't know who he's talking to, but we have now for at least a year been making drastic changes to the design on the lakebank projects. And a good example is Pond one oh-nine right now. The Armamax on Pond one oh-nine is, I would be surprised if it's more than twenty percent, maybe twenty-five. Uh, this, this idea that we're continuing to use Armamax, uh, willy-nilly all over the place, we haven't done that for a couple of years. We put in Armamax
Correct.
Because we either had an escarpment issue or we had a slope issue that created the need for that. We haven't been doing that, so I'm trying to figure out where, what is his concern or where is he getting the information? That it sounds like he thinks that we're still using Armamax all the time, we have cut way back on Armamax. And I just don't see any alternative of doing our projects any differently than we're doing right now when we minimize, minimize the Armamax and use the, uh, uh, black, uh, material, uh, in lieu of Armamax and then put down the stone. I don't, and then bringing in the dirt for compaction. I don't see any one of those, uh, activities having an alternative for change. None, absolutely none.
Can I, can I add to that, uh, question, Ed? The material that we're using, what is it, what is the official name of it?
So the black material is a non-woven geotextile and then the green material is, it's called Armor Max.
Okay, so we're using the black material and the green material, one's Armor Max, one is the non?
Non-woven. The black, as I learned, the black goes everywhere, in, in the areas that are really significant.
Armor Max.
The Armor Max is on top of it.
And are both materials, are they manufactured in the US or are they imported?
I believe they're both manufactured in the US, the Armor Max is, um, I'm pretty sure both of them are, I think they have to be actually for this SRF project, so yes.
Through SRF, that's what I thought too. Um, so one of the things that we, um, I think Ed was asking about, again, what we've been talking about for a long time is value engineering and, uh, driving efficiency over time for these pond banks, and I think what Ed is saying is we've been, we've been doing that. I think he was asking you for your confirmation, but at the same time, this may be an opportunity for us to just put an article together, you know, out on Facebook, how we have value engineered our ponds or cost-saving or driving efficiency through district work. Um, just to be able to show from when we started to where we're at today, where we've made improvements and how we are paying attention to cost efficiencies and, and value engineering. Now, it might be challenging because inflation costs are definitely different today than they were seven plus years ago when we started this project, but there could be an opportunity so we can at least communicate, so the rods and other people in the community understand that, you know, what our approach is and how we're trying to be as efficient as possible in everything we do, but specifically around the ponds because of the cost.
That'd be easy to do, so we just take the ponds, indicate the pond number, indicate, and this is critical, indicate the pond color. We started, keep in mind, with the Reds, the tough projects, really bad, and we're now getting back down into some of these others. If we would just take the pond, show the color, show the lineal footage, show the cost, and show the cost per foot, I think.
The cost per foot is, I think that's the important thing. If you're, if you're, if you're looking at apples to apples, even if you're comparing red ponds that are the most critical versus the ponds we're doing today, you know, it's, um.
Ed, what you just said is being done.
Yeah, the cost, the cost per linear foot is what's important.
Bob and I are working on that, Bob gave me a template, um, and so I've been trying to track down some of those from twenty-twenty past, our record-keeping.
Going back to seventeen, and we've got them from Pelican from two thousand fourteen to today, and I'm trying to compare.
We're.
Well, getting final, getting final construction costs versus what the bids were.
Absolutely.
And what's important to that is what Ed was saying, if we are going to publish like an article, is we have prioritized all the ponds.
Yep.
We have.
But Nate, no mistake about it, we're still spending millions, we are, we are hemorrhaging.
We have completely changed from what the.
Well, not completely changed, we still just did a golf course, which I totally, we just finished putting it on the golf course, which was completely wrong. We shouldn't have spent a nickel on the golf course, grade it and walk away. So we're not doing everything.
Well, let's not get into that.
Okay, let's not talk about the mistakes we made.
But the, uh, the thing is, is that I think there's some misunderstanding out there that we're continuing to do it the old way. We're not anywhere close to doing it the old way. We're not anywhere close to doing it the old way.
Most importantly, most people just don't even know, period. They just, they think, here's what someone told them that we've spent this much, and how much are we spending today?
We can work on putting together an educational pamphlet. We have all of this on our website, and we can do a post about it.
And it's very difficult to determine where the money came from, whether it's SRF, whether it was O and M, whether it was grants or whatever else is out there. We've got all kinds of different sources. We've done everything we can to make this as complicated as it can be.
Well, the money's, the money's one thing, and the means and methods of doing it's another, because as of now, we still are doing new things and different things, and some things are not even working as we're doing it now. So if we had left it and kept it the way it was two years ago, would it be fine? We tried something new now, and it didn't work, and a good example is Pond of Pelican. I mean, to me, that is totally unacceptable, but it's what we told a contractor to do.
But he's not off that hook.
Yeah. But I'm saying, but that's the, that's the direction, like, you know, so-
We got to try new things, and sometimes they're more successful than others.
You also need a two-year cycle to determine, you know, what long-term quality is, because you got to go through a rainy season, maybe even event, in order to determine what your irrigate, what your-
Every single one is going to be different.
We have some that are, that are started in '14, so we've got 11 years' experience on some of ours.
Okay, anyway, I think we've talked-
Well, anyway, if somebody's putting together that cost estimate, I think it might diffuse what Rod is making to some people, or it would sound like to some people that we're still spending money like a drug sailor.
Three billion left here.
That's not the case at all.
Okay.
Three million, that's still pretty drunk.
We'll work on it. Bobby, are you ready for 11A?
Yes, ma'am.
We have Jay here with Burger Tooms, I can't say, Alom, Gaim, Elam, Gaines, Frank, McGuire, I can keep going. How many people you got there? A lot of them?
Well, the firm's official name is still Burger Tooms, Elam Gaines, and Frank.
There we go. Jay, our auditor, your auditor.
So we're okay. So I'm going to do the presentation that's on your screen. On page, the first page says Report of Independent Auditors, and the basic financial statement opinion is what we call an unmodified opinion, and it says, in our opinion, the basic financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. The financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate fund, information of Gateway Services Community Development District as of September 30, 2024. And again, that's an unmodified opinion. That's the opinion everybody wants. That means that all the numbers that are in the financial statement are stated materially correct. We also have some opinions relative to compliance, and then they require a management letter by the Auditor General. In our internal control compliance letter, there were no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the governmental auditing standards. We did have one finding in the management letter this year, and that was the actual expenditures and transfers out in the Pelican Preserve and Stony Brook Special Reserve Funds exceeded the budget. Okay? And so we've had a lot of talks about that, and I'm pretty confident that won't happen again.
So just-
Pay off the 2013 bond.
I, there were two questions at the same time, I'm sorry.
Is this basically addressed by, was it going to be addressed by, would have been addressed by 9B?
Right. But it didn't happen within 60 days.
But in paying off the 2013 bond, when we did, that wasn't in the budget.
Correct.
But that was a decision by P-PAC and supported by this board.
So just so you understand what occurred and what has since changed, historically, the board at the very end of the fiscal year would do a single budget amendment and move all of the money that you had decided throughout the year. If it was moving money from the reserves to the OO2 fund to pay off that bond, whatever it was. We received notice too late. You guys had canceled your second November meeting, but regardless, we had received the notice too late to even do the budget amendment, because it is required 60 days after the close of the fiscal year. And so what has since changed is every quarter when Steven Blum gives his financial update, we will bring, if, if one, if we need to, a budget amendment to make sure we capture this and this never happens again.
That's good.
So, but right now, alls it is is just a finding.
Yes. Nothing will change. Even had you approved, B, nothing would have changed. His, his opinion would have stayed the same. That's why we pulled him.
Reality versus logic.
But based on the finding, we can, we can substantiate that, that finding through logical, logical reasoning.
Had we known in the summer we were going to do it, we'd have plenty of time.
Exactly.
It's a late-breaking development.
Process of, processes have changed, so this should not happen again.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead, Jay.
Okay.
The other thing is, in that test session, it has to do with compliance with-
Hold up a second, you have a question?
Oh, in the future, let's say, I don't know, any of the funds, they decide to take money out of their reserves and use it to finish up, or, and it goes over the budgeted amount. Is that the kind of amendment you're talking about?
Yes.
Anything that creates a budget over expenditure, which means that the actual expenditures exceed
the budget.
Okay. So using money from reserves is going to cause that, that amendment to have to happen?
Maybe.
It depends.
Unless you plan for the use of that reserve when you pass the original budget. If this is an unexpected use of the reserves, then yes, it'll create the need for a budget amendment. But if it was an anticipated use of the reserves, it would have been included in the original budget, and you wouldn't have to do a budget amendment.
Okay. Is there any other place that this money would come from other than reserves that we should kind of keep our eye on? I mean, I can understand reserves causing it to go over, but where else could money come from?
If you, in the middle of the year, got a unanticipated revenue source that you used to complete an unanticipated project.
You mean such as a grant or something, I don't-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, like a grant, and then you had, then you, then you spin it, that would require a budget amendment.
Typically, also, if money moves funds, capital fund to the general fund or OO1, then we would have to have a budget amendment. So by doing this quarterly, we will make sure we capture any and all instances that come up.
But we're not including like bond money?
No.
If you have to pay for something remaining, an ad order or something at the end of a project, and you use it out of bond money, that would not trigger this kind of amendment.
As long as we don't go over that number.
Thank you.
Then the last report that we have is a test session report having to do with Section 218, 415 Florida statutes, and the board complied with that statute, and that has to do with investments. Then we also, because you expended more than $750,000 in federal and state grants, we did a, what's called a single audit, and we had single audit reporting, and there were no findings or questioned costs, and you complied in all material respects with the grant requirements.
Those were the ones that we did a couple of years ago omitted. We didn't do those, and we got signaled out that we needed to do these single audit requirements.
I don't know.
I think it was several years ago.
I don't remember that, I'm sorry. You know, it's automatic for us if it's over 750, it's a single audit.
That was 10 years ago, Tony? I remember it coming up that we were told we needed to do this, so we're covered.
We got a good auditor who got us.
We're covered.
Oh, my God.
So now we'll talk a little bit about your financial position and results of operations. Your ending fund balance in your governmental funds was almost 23 million. Your ending net position for governmental activities was 20 million, and the difference between those two is the governmental funds is the fund level, and the governmental activities is at the government-wide level. Then your business-type activities, the ending net position was 28,207,000. And now, because business-type activities is the enterprise funds, and they are accounted for the same way at the fund level and the government-wide level, there's no difference in the net position. And so your total net position at the, as of September 30, was 48,574,000. Now for your operations for the year, the governmental funds had a positive change in fund balance of 330 million, I mean, 330,000. The governmental activities had a negative change of 2 million. Business activities had a $3 million increase in net position, and the total change in net position was 1.2 million. And generally, I'm saying generally, the reason for the negative governmental activities change in net position has to do with depreciation on your assets, because you don't budget that. So you don't, that's not recognized at the fund level.
So the 1 million, 1.2 million, is that good?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not negative.
No, but I mean for an operation our size, that's a good number to continue at.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, so finally, we have what is listed here as a SAS 114 letter. I affectionately call it the Enron letter, and I call it the Enron letter because this letter was a result of the Enron audit failure. And so because of that, the AICPA came out with new standards about what we had, as auditors had to report to the board. There's a communication about management responsibilities. We had no immaterial, uncorrected misstatements. And finally, the Lake Bank Restoration Fund had a deficit fund balance. So are there any questions?
Well, a deficit fund balance doesn't sound good, but is it-
Well, this is one of your programs where you're borrowing the money and spending it.
Was a timing issue between when we spent it and when I got the money back from SRF, which is why it was negative.
Okay, so we fronted the money?
Yes. It's a reimbursement. And it was just the timing of the cost.
At the time it ended, we were in a deficit.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to work on timing of as close as we can get. We talked about that, Laura will do her reimbursement, but it does take SRF time to get that money back to us, so may or may not make it, but that fund ebbs and flows based on reimbursement requests.
I did do it towards the beginning of September, but we didn't get the funds until October, so. I tried.
All right, anything else for Jay?
So generally, you would say that the district is operating in a good financial method?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The report had none of those bad words in it. None of those bad words.
No.
There's only one section where it says the district did not meet these criteria, and it's the criteria that if you met them, you'd have a financial emergency. So that's a good thing.
Yes.
To not meet those criteria.
That's in the management letter, by the way.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a good negative statement.
Yes.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great afternoon.
You, too. Safe travels home. Yep. Next, we've got Steven Blum on to give his quarterly update on financials. Go ahead, Steven.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is the quarterly report through March, which is at this point 50% the way through the year, and I'm, you know, happy to report very solid numbers across the board. When you look at this, you know, starting here with the revenue, and that's why I mentioned the 50%, if you look at the percent of budget, if you started to see numbers that were under 50%, that's, you know, where you would start to have a concern, but numbers look very good. Now, again, the annual assessments are revenue that's collected upfront and collected once, but you're at 96% of your annual assessments being collected through March, which is a very strong number. And then looking at your utility billings, you're at 51%, so not tremendously above budget, but really right there in terms of having those billings. Again, if that was under 50%, there would be, you know, obviously some additional discussions and research, but really good to kind of see those numbers where they are. And then we usually provide the breakdown there to the right, and you can see, obviously, assessments, it's about 55% of the total revenue with utility billings being about 20%, but certainly looks very good. And once I get to the bottom of this page, I will touch a little bit more on your interest income, but, you know, when you look at it, it's well over a half a million dollars for the first six months that's earned in just, just in interest, which is, it's a little bit under last year where we were, because I was curious and I checked that out. Again, the rates have come down since last year as the Fed fund rate goes down, you know, unfortunately, so does the interest income, but, you know, it's not that far behind. Last year, in total, we did a little bit over, I think, 1.2 million for the whole year, so being right around there, again, it is under, but it's still good, and we are continuing to, to make sure that we invest, and we're still doing some, some T-bills and stuff where it makes sense. Moving to spending, now again, this is, the numbers there is about 32% halfway through, which again is very good, but obviously there are a lot of capital projects in that number. But if you look at the general fund, Pelican Preserve, you know, enterprise, well under the 50%, and I know some of that will be timing, because projects will get kicked off, and, you know, there's still six months to go, but not seeing anything here that, you know, certainly is alarming or anything. Now, your debt service expense is over for the year, but as you, you know, know that we paid off the bond, so that's, you know, kind of as we expected, but the numbers again look very solid, still six months to go, but very good. Again, there I provided just more on the interest earnings, so you can see it by fund there. Obviously, capital projects, you know, where that's really great when you're capital projects, by the way, is because if you were to have something, you know, out of the ordinary occur, you know, an add-on, you know, a change order, not that we want any of those, but you've got some interest there that you can use for that, and then, you know, enterprise fund, obviously, the general fund and Pelican Preserve, you know, that money, if not needed, could go to reserves for next year, or, you know, unanticipated projects. The other thing, and we talked about this, and obviously you just had your, your audit report, this is kind of a look at, again, the carryover amounts by fund, a kind of the final look at that, and again, I, I put some additional notes to kind of clarify how these numbers were calculated, because again, for example, depreciation is non-cash, so I take that out, and there were a couple other non-cash items in the enterprise fund, but not bad when you look at this by fund in terms of the carryover amount, which again is, is super important as, you know, either for reserves or the unanticipated projects, so it's very good to be seeing that, and obviously not seeing negative numbers or, or, you know, nothing, so it's very good numbers to see there. And again, overall, very solid report for the first six months.
And I just want to remind the board that I know you'll see in that general fund over a million dollars, we had those projects that we said were for the park stuff, that we were going to carry that forward for this year, and so that's why there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in there that is for the park stuff, so.
And so Pelican's 190,000, that means that they budgeted that amount, but it was not spent.
That's, yes, that's correct. They would have budgeted and it wasn't spent, or, or-
190,000 in some odd, in, in reserves.
Yes, unassigned reserves.
Unassigned.
Right. But also-
This is the kind of money that ends up with the ponds fund underspending, and it stays in bonds, safety and security, and landscaping. That's what this money is. P-PAC could put it all in reserves if they wanted, or they could do nothing, and they could bring it to us, and right now, these are the monies that are in their checkbook, unspent from the prior year.
Not just those, it's not just those three, though some of it is from the administrative stuff where we underspent, too, so then that would go into the unassigned reserves, but for ponds, landscape, and safety and security, whatever they underspent from their budget goes into their own reserve fund. Everything else goes into the unassigned.
Okay.
Now, where does the Pelican Preserve Fund interest? Is that in O2? Does that just go automatically into the, the reserves?
It's yours. It's your money, it's your interest.
I'm just asking where it goes. Is it accrued here?
Yes, because we budget for it, so.
Oh, we do budget for it?
Yeah, we do budget for it, and it's consistently coming over the budget.
I missed that we budgeted.
Yep.
Yeah, we're very conservative with that number, because you don't know where the, you don't want to put too much in the interest income budget, and then- don't want to put too much in the, the interest, um, income budget and then wind up really short, now you can't assess, you can't make up a difference. But yeah, we, I think, I'm looking at this year, we budgeted ten thousand and we're already at ninety-four thousand, but yeah, it does drop down to the reserve, um, you know, automatically and get, get put into the carry forward. But the fact that, the fact that you're so far over budget, you know, on the revenue side for interest income is also why, you know, you got, you know, some of that will certainly go down to the carry forward, so it's accumulative across the board. But yeah, having that additional, uh, investment to interest income is certainly, uh, great to help, you know, kind of these projects that become unanticipated or, or surprise, I guess.
And, um, one last question, Tony, uh, the Stony Brook, um, investment earnings, the four thousand seven hundred and five dollars, will you address all of that money in the oh oh four account when we come down to the, uh, to that, um, agenda item?
Well, that's what we planned on doing with, with the agreement, uh, addressing it one way or another, either, you know, either it gets expended before.
Well, I don't need you to address it now, I'm just saying, will you include that and address it at the time we come to that agenda item?
Yes, until we have this initial discussion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen?
Nope.
Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Move on to Stony Brook Master Lift Station Odor Control.
Yep, um, so just wanted to follow up, um, we had, as you recall, we had the professional consultant come down, make recommendations. We've worked with the, um, vendor to solicit the, a proposal and price for the said recommendations from the consultant. Um, this is, there's a couple options, but there's lease, this is a leased option, um, we're looking for your approval on. Um, there are lease to own options at the different intervals at, I think, like three, four, five years out, but, um, we want to get this larger odor control unit in at the Stony Brook Master Lift Station as soon as possible to provide that long-term, uh, solution that we have promised to that community.
So, um, if I'm reading this correctly, the lease part of it is only for a year and then there's the option that we could purchase.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, and it's at different amounts if you purchase in year one, year two, or year three.
Correct.
What's the total cost?
For, for purchasing.
Buyout right off the bat, the whole?
I have a different price proposal for buyout option, um, but that is not viable right now with our budget.
Okay, because what, what we're doing right now is we're paying about fifty thousand, seven thousand down, fifty thousand a year.
And how long should this unit last? What's the useful life of the unit?
Oh, I'd have to ask the vendor, I'm not, I'm not sure, but it's, it, we're leasing it, so they're response, they're on the hook for any, any issues that we would have with it.
I guess when we, if it's time to buy out a lease, that's when we'll address that.
That's when, yes.
If it's working, we go on down the road, if it's not, we start asking questions.
So, um, there, there is.
We can buy it next year.
There is some additional items that have to be done, electrical things, which, um, staff, hoping that you approved this and trying to get ahead of the game, um, was working with Bentley, our electrical contractor, to do the preemptive stuff.
So they do the prep work?
Yes.
What are they doing over there now?
Prep work for this. Manhole was left open, that's why it was thinking there for a month.
On the basis that we approve it.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, on favor, say aye.
Wait, wait, what do we just, run back what we approved?
Stony Brook Master Lift Station, to lease for one year.
To lease for one year, okay.
Yes.
All right.
We'll reevaluate in a year's time, we'll make sure that this system works as the consultant recommended, and then we can have a discussion a year from now.
And this is the only one that we have a problem with right now?
No, we have a second one, but that's going to be part, brought in the budget for next fiscal year, at Carl's Gown.
What's the turnover from closed down, I'm assuming we're going to run the one we got till we're ready to make the switch over?
We're do-
What's the turnover?
Immediately.
Immediately, that's why we're doing all of the prep work now.
Okay. So all of the construction work associated with installing this, hooking it up, electrical, all there has to be is a pipe going from the old unit to the new, new unit, and that's it?
Yeah.
Unplug one, plug another one.
Pretty much, yes. We had to, we had to do the hole a little bit bigger, um, and then they had to do some of the electrical work, and so doing all of that, getting ready, gearing up, I think it's six week lead time, um, for the equipment, so we're trying to get it in as soon as possible. If, all right.
So let's go ahead and move to, uh, B.
Uh, this, this budget discussion, you had asked, uh, we're going to talk about staff. So, uh, as a result of the discussions during the assessment methodology, whoops, wrong thing, I wanted to blow it up, um, we changed the categories to admin, parks and rec, and then enterprise fund. So under the enterprise fund, there's, and the general fund, there's admin and admin ops, and, um, so admin would be you guys, because you're just admin, you don't have anything to do with the day-to-day operations of the business. Admin operations would be all staff that are involved with the day-to-day operations of the business, like Chelsea and myself, uh, even Vicki, Bill, they do some administrative work, it's not all just strictly related to operations. Parks and rec is, parks and rec, and then operations would be the field staff.
What are the black numbers, account numbers or something?
Yeah, that's for me, that's so that I know when I set this up to do with the journal entries and the budget, I know where to put them. It just makes it easier for me.
So what, is there any difference in percentages from last year to this year?
Um, I didn't.
Yes, because of the assessment methodology, the only difference from when you all approved the assessment methodology to here is we failed to put in a percentage of our administration's time into parks and rec. So when we talked assessment methodology, it was, my time was sixty percent enterprise, forty percent admin. Laura's was the opposite, well, we do spend some of our time in parks and rec, so we felt it prudent to add a couple percentage of our time to, towards parks and rec.
Otherwise, everything else is exactly the same as what you had seen previously. So just this seven percent here is different.
Except that in the past, we had the names of the individuals and the percent of where it was charged, because we went through all that last year.
It's right here.
Well, but it's not, it's a very different format, that's all.
Uh, it's, it's the same format, it's just that there's less columns.
It's a different format.
It's exactly the same format.
Because last year, you specifically put in the amount that Pelican was charged, where do I see that now?
You don't, because.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
It ain't the same, it's different.
Because it's a new.
However, I, I understand that, but, and here's the but, the combined admin cost for Pelican, Carol, in this year, in this proposal, is about seventeen percent, roughly? Okay.
One-third of fifty percent.
One-third of fifty percent, whereas last year, we were talking about increases of fifty to a hundred to two hundred for the individuals, so there's, there's small changes, but there is a change. This will be a lot simpler for them. However, I still would very much like to see a timekeeping system similar to what an attorney does or what an engineer does. When somebody calls in with something, you just jot down that they called in and you total it up, whether it was Stony Brook, or Gateway Greens, or Pelican, or wherever. I don't think we have any real, other than, what do you work on, Georgia, and what do you work on, Chelsea, and what do you work on? You know, it's, we're swagging, and I think we could be more professional than that, that's my opinion.
I would agree with that.
I would disagree with that, because we have, we will, we have been tracking time, there, the detailed sheet is provided, um, it's not to the minute of what we do, if I did that, I, I'd be writing down everything I do all day instead of doing the actual job.
Like an attorney does, right?
I don't know what an attorney does, I'm not an attorney.
Mr. Attorney, what do you do when you get a call from somebody?
He has an assistant who does it all for him.
But it's done, that, that's my only point.
So, this, again, what is provided here is what was approved as part of the assessment methodology, except Laura and mine putting a percentage of our time towards parks and rec. And you'll notice what's different on here than what you've seen in the past is you all go through our payroll system too, so we've added you onto the staffing sheet.
You've always been, it's always been included in the budget under that category, but we never actually show it on the staffing sheet.
I'm not arguing the budget, I'm not arguing the number, I'm merely saying.
No, I'm seeing the, the board, I'm seeing.
I'm merely saying, I know what we approved, I'm merely saying, I think I would like the timekeeping system that the district used to be more robust and reflect what's actually done. We're not inventing the wheel here, there's plenty of programs out there that do this. All I'm asking is we implement it. For those people that are.
And I think since this is a year of major change, um, we could do it for one more year and just see if.
We've never done it, we haven't done it. If you look at, uh, the, the board or the paper that she puts out monthly.
It's out weekly.
Puts it out weekly, whatever, if you looked at, uh, uh, trying to find the name here.
The Weekly Time Draper.
One sits opposite, uh, the young, the young woman that's opposite, Georgia. If you look at her sheet, the weekly sheet, Julie, the sheet looks the same in September, October, November, December, January, the words don't even change, but that tells me she's not doing it. She's, she's a willful adherence to the request, but if it never changes week to week, I can't believe that. My week is never the same.
The hours change. Her job is to counsel people.
It doesn't change on that. If you look at what she puts in, the verbiage is identical, every report. Why we put it out, I don't know.
Her, her job, her time that she spends working on things for Pelican is answering phone calls, entering invoices, and doing purchase orders, and that's what her time says.
So she never says how many hours, what day she did it, just, just in general, that's what I do.
We're in there by day.
It never changes.
Okay.
Regardless, we're looking to the board, we were planning on stopping our, our timekeeping because you did approve the assessment methodology, which is seventeen percent to Pelican, twenty-three to, what am I, I'm thirty-three?
Twenty-seven, no, it's not, it depends, the, the stacking is based on the stacking sheet.
Okay, well, this is what we're presenting with the number of staff.
And, and I'm not proposing I change this, all I'm asking for is in addition to this, we get some reckoning on what people are really doing in time-wise and where they're spending it.
All right. Any other questions?
No?
Okay.
Want to touch on the next part?
Well, I, can I make a motion then? I make a motion that we have a more robust timekeeping system for the eleven people or so that are involved in this.
And are you willing to pay for that as well?
And their time for doing it?
No, no, but if there is, if there is a system, because it's.
It's everybody, it's not just Pelican.
We're not living in the days where George is going to go, took a call at ten oh five, spent fifteen minutes talking with Pelican.
It's not that difficult to do, Doug.
But, but I, I, no, I, we don't have a.
Okay, we don't give a rip that I'm the only one talking about.
But it's like, if, there, there are tools out there.
Yeah.
But it's technology that we will have to purchase and implement, so are you willing to spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars?
In terms of, in terms of the total Gateway budget, absolutely, because we're one Gateway, yes, I think that's a worthwhile expense. I would want to like to see that.
So, so do you want, okay, so let me clarify.
One more quick question. And the purpose of that, I want to make sure we're trying to solve the right problem, is you were questioning whether or not the seventeen percent isn't, is the accurate number?
No, I'm going to go with whatever's in the thing, but I would like to see the sanity check between what we arbitrarily project through the methodology study to reality.
So that's what I'm saying, you're looking for validation to the seventeen percent.
Where it's going, maybe it's more in enterprise and less in, in general, I don't know, because nobody knows. Maybe they are fifty-fifty in enterprise in general, maybe not, maybe it's seventy-thirty, and all I'm doing is trying to figure out where are the people spending their time and effort, and is that the right spot? Because I remember the conversation a year ago when we were still doing the percentages, oh, well, six months later, we'll tell you and we'll adjust, what a load of BS, there's never been any adjustment.
Well, Laura, didn't you say it was actually higher? So, so.
I, I haven't seen the report, I hear verbiage, and then again, the foundation, like Julie's time, never changes, so I don't have any confidence in that report.
So then, so then, would you be happy with a more detailed information from Julie? That's what you were asking?
Well, that's why, I just.
Which would also add more time.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask her to count invoices and purchase, that's ridiculous.
I mean, it's not, it's valid what Bob is asking for, that, that there, that we have a, because this is new, that we have an understanding of what the work goes into, the percentage, I get it, but there's also additional work that will come out of that, because it's, it takes time to stop, what kind of log we're going to use, are we using Excel? Excel's going to spend more time, are we looking at a system, systems might cost ten, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars to automate that, because there are some systems that do that.
Let's at least just work.
What are we trying to solve for is what, um, do we want to spend additional staff time, or is there another way to validate the, the seventeen percent?
I'm open to anything.
Even if it was, would we be willing to change it?
I'm open to anything.
Can I make a suggestion?
Okay.
Typically, every year, you guys put a dollar amount in your board's contingency, let us continue tracking like we're doing, you may not like the verbiage that you're seeing, but the numbers that she is doing is, is what, I trust my staff, that they're putting down the numbers that they're putting on, just like I put, I talked to you for an hour the other day, I talked to Doug Zaner, I talked to Carol, whomever it was. So, we're going to have a year, what, a year and a half?
We already have a year.
We already have a year as well.
Trust me, you've never talked to me for an hour.
No, not you, I don't talk to you for an hour, I talk to him, he makes up for it.
He thinks too. You look for him.
I've never talked to you for an hour.
I would suggest, if this is something you want, if that is something you want, you have a board's contingency every year, let us get through the end of the fiscal year like we all agreed months ago that we were going to have the number tracking, regardless of the details, we have the numbers, that's the most important part, we'll be able to quantify that. Laura does the PTO input, she does all of that, we have that for a year's time, and if you guys want to invest in that type of system, we can get some pricing and bring it to you.
And that sounds totally reasonable, all I'd like to do is to see options of what's available and how to do it. I certainly don't want to have a reporting system, it takes two hours a day, that's ridiculous.
I would love for you to shadow me one day, please.
No, no, it's not, it's not it, I just think that the district should have a reporting system, other businesses do it.
Okay, all right, that is my suggestion.
Doesn't have to be negative.
Charge your time, three hours a week, so much to Pelican, so much to this, so much to that, what do you do with the two, three hours that doesn't happen assigned time? Who participates in that?
We still have to pay for it, that's what I'm saying.
Right now, what you're saying, what you're saying is right now, you don't want to pay for that.
No, no, I'm not, and I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying I want to understand. I'm perfectly willing to take the seventeen percent, that's not even for discussion. So it isn't a dollar act, but I still would like to know where they're putting their efforts.
Well, this year, so far, from what I'm tracking, of all of the hours that have been tracked, does not include PTO holidays, just the time that's tracked, of all of the tracked hours, Pelican is using twenty percent of them.
That's what, I thought you said twenty-one the last time, you actually went down a little bit.
It went down to twenty.
Seventeen, and they're actually utilizing twenty-one.
So we're, we're looking at charging you seventeen percent for next year and you're actually using twenty percent of it right now.
So if we do that, and at the end of the year, staff is twenty percent, you won't have any problem with going to twenty percent or?
Absolutely not, except, as long as that follows in the methodology, again, they're two different things, I'm okay with the methodology, not challenging that, seventeen percent is seventy, it's simple, it's easy, separate item, new conversation, I would just like to see where everybody's spending their effort on behalf of the district.
Right.
It's not just Bob trying to cut down Pelican's costs, although, I will say, and Julie, uh, Julie, and Laura can confirm, Pelican has done an awful lot in the last year to cut down on their expenses. And again, the point is, if people make an effort, if you know where you're being charged and you make an effort to make it better, you get results, efficiency. And again, the point is, if people make an effort, if you know where you're being charged and you make an effort to make it better, you get results. Efficiency.
All right, so Laura, anything else?
Yes, Carol requested at the last meeting, the, to discuss the benefits, where Laura had solicited proposals, um, last year for FRS and how.
Oh, well, since you have it up on the board, uh, the organizational chart that you just had up there. Since our public works director and, uh, the project manager are going to be empty by the end of this month. Hopefully filled again. Are you thinking about doing any restructuring of those two positions?
And also the Stormwater Specialist is not going to be there. Elle.
Oh, well, no, that's this summer.
That is noted.
No, no, I'm saying, but there's three positions.
Right.
To Carol's point.
The only thing that has changed is, if you recall, we previously had a landscape lead position. Nathan was wearing two hats. He was the project manager and doing the landscaping. As you recall, at the last meeting, we talked about that irrigation tech. So basically, the landscape lead that we morphed into Nathan's role, we're going to pull it apart. So the budget's not going to change, but we changing, we're changing the landscape lead to a landscape and irrigation tech, which that position is filled via internal staff.
As of today.
Okay.
Where's that on here?
It's not, because when I put this out, I didn't know I was having two resignations that week. So it'll be updated for you next.
And it was accepted today.
What is your, what's our plan to fill those two open roles?
They're, we're actively recruiting right now. Um, it is my intent to hire the public works director first. Either bringing somebody in or, and giving them the opportunity to hire a project manager, just like I did with Daniel. He recruited Nathan, um, and he chose that, he or she, that public works director, give them the opportunity to build their team.
What's, what's your timeline?
Uh, yesterday.
No, no, I mean, are you looking at sixty days?
Sixty days. We, we do have interviews set up next week already.
And if you were to put a dollar amount on, uh, potential loss of productivity as a, as, as a vacancy of Daniel, do you see, other than, is there any?
Daniel does a lot.
What's, what's our risk over the next sixty?
Ninety days.
Ninety days of not having someone in that position?
The dye.
Or not getting any sleep.
The dye in my hair?
No, I mean.
The cost of the color.
No, seriously.
No, seriously.
I mean, is, because here's what I'm trying to get to. This is a difficult position, position to recruit for. It's going to be hard. I mean, we, we go through this every time for these types of positions, trying to find someone that has the background that we're looking for, that can fit within our range.
Meets all of our expectations.
Yeah, I mean, and more than likely, we're going to have to find someone, again, like, like Daniel, within, with the understanding that in three years, that person's going to get recruited out. I mean, it's the model. It's the model of the district on, on all of, all of our roles, especially in our sites. We're going to lose people to the city of the county.
Daniels is a little bit different with the military. This is a little bit different. The project manager, that's a totally different deal. He was stolen.
No, but even, but even if it wasn't the military, I, I would probably say in a year, Daniel would probably, just like a lot of people on staff.
He could have been stolen by another government.
Would have been recruited by someone else. So I just want to make sure that we are not waiting too long. And, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because if, if we need to set aside some dollars to be able to pay, uh, you know.
A temp person.
Well, not ten, for a contingent firm. So we need to pay twenty percent for to someone, I'd much rather spend ten, fifteen, you know, grand to get someone in within, within sixty days.
I'm, I'm, so if you all may recall, uh, Daniel was on leave last year. He went off his time period. Laura and I divided and conquered. I'm confident we'll have this, we'll fill it in sixty days. If, if not sooner.
I don't remember any, any issues at a time when he was gone. So you, now, the good news is you've already got, got experience covering his, you know, his area. But these are the things when we have these level positions.
But then with Nathan rolling out too.
But when Daniel left, he also, Nathan was also here.
Yeah.
So now you're going to have two of them gone.
Correct. And I, I don't foresee there to be any issues. Again, we have Angelo just taking on the irrigation and landscaping position. So the landscaping duties are going to be covered. Um, project management, between Laura and I and the committees, and, and the committees are slowing down. Most of the projects have been completed. Daniel is working actively on finishing the budget before he leaves and, um, wrapping up any projects. He has kept me abreast of everything that's been going on in his department, because if he has to leave. So I have no concern. We actually have a meeting Tuesday about a transition plan, but sixty days, I'm confident we'll have a public works director.
Here's what I would recommend. I'd say we open up the full-time position for, uh, for Daniel's backfill. Nathan's, I think we go ahead and post it, and maybe we post it as a, you know, either a full-time or a contract role. I don't know if I would wait sixty, potentially ninety days to hire Daniel, and then have another sixty, ninety days to hire Nathan's backfill. I would do them in parallel.
Yeah, we are.
And if you sequence them correctly, you can have, hopefully you hire the one and then you've got final interviews that that leader can pick from. But that's your plan?
They're both posted right now.
They're both posted. Okay. I thought I saw both of them, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
I posted them on ICMA as well, so they're, they're, they're on our, our site. And then the stuff that comes with our recruiting module, as well as I put them on ICMA.
The one thing that maybe I didn't expect on your chart, was I thought we hired Stephanie in anticipation of Elle going away. A year from now, did we expect to have two Stormwater? Okay.
If you look, go to the top, in the top right-hand corner, it says as of four-ten, twenty-twenty-five. Elle is, Elle is set to retire in June.
And then we'll have one Stormwater Specialist. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Is that going to be a place that goes out for recruitment on, when she comes?
That's what Stephanie was hiring for.
Stephanie straight up.
And.
I got a, I got a job to test her.
One more, I just want us to be thinking about this. Again, I'm not even sure if it's viable. I've mentioned, I think I've brought it up before. With our amenities, uh, in our facilities, and just looking at Gateway as a whole, I think we need to do, we need to look into either an in-house, uh, security or whatever we want to call it, uh, or we look, uh, externally. So I think we just need to look at the numbers. And what I would say the reason for that is, when we get this administrative building and, and the parks, I think we're going to need a presence at certain times to ensure, uh, that we can, uh, regulate, monitor, and enforce, uh, who's using these facilities.
Like from six at night till six in the morning.
Or just whatever. I mean, we.
Daytime and got staff.
We can do, we can do studies, but we, we still, we even have that problem today over here on these fields. You go over here on, on Sundays or in the afternoons, when the leagues aren't here, there, I, there's people out there using it that, uh, that don't.
That's not a bad idea.
But also, I think there's also just the presence of having a rover around with the kids on their e-bikes, with, you know, uh, golf carts. Just even if we can't enforce, hey, you're not allowed to do that. Maybe it could help with some speeding stuff. So I don't know which is more viable, you know, in-house hiring, you know, a couple, you know, a couple of part-time people and a rover or a security system.
We'll hire a party fighter.
Yeah, yeah. But it's something I think we should look at. If it's not feasible, then we make that decision, but I think it's something we should strongly consider.
There's going to be some type of security, because you're going to have major problems in that park with putting in some of those facilities, uh, that you haven't even thought of. We have it over at the country club. We can't even maintain it there. We've got people using the facilities that aren't members. You're going to get that here.
And I do think.
Then all hell's going to be.
And we will have a benefit, uh, and that's one of the reasons why we put the administrative building on that piece of property.
Consolidating.
Because if you've got administrative building and you've got Lee County as a satellite, I mean, and it, there's a, you know, there's a, a vehicle sitting in the parking lot, there will be some.
That's a deterrent anyhow.
There will be some deterrents, but I think we should seriously look at, uh, maybe it's the next fiscal budget, but I think we should look at viability. But for me, it's, do we do nothing or do we look at building something internally? Or do we look at, uh, ex, you know, looking at, uh, external vendor, which is most cost-effective and which one do we get the biggest?
I would suggest for, because we don't know, we're, we're anticipating April, but I would say if anything, we would utilize the sheriff and contract it out for next fiscal year. And then this budget time next year, we have that, that hard conversation.
It's fine. I just think let's put it on the radar. Let's at least start having some conversation.
Think sooner?
No, I'm just thinking cost, because sheriff is fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah, sheriff's pretty expensive.
Security guard is.
We'll, we'll solicit proposals.
Seventeen twenty-two.
And a security guard can call issue. That's what we wanted to do.
We'll solicit some price. Well, we have pricing from Pelican and Stony Brook for their security, so, um.
Gives us an idea.
We'll give you an idea. We'll put, we'll bring that to you.
Fence and barbed wire. The paying hours. I can just tell you what you're going to run.
Electrify, electrify the fence. There's our little kids.
You're going to have people in there. What are those security systems where it goes on here? Hey, you're not supposed to be here.
You're going to have people over there using those facilities that are not members of this community. And it's, you'll find out what we're having over there at the, at the community.
They will sell them passes.
I didn't know you were wide open. I'll come over.
Sell them passes.
All right, Carol.
Okay, now.
Carol had requested those. Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, so this is the same thing that I put together for last year. Uh, we do know that this, our rates are, I think they're, well, they're good for the rest of this year anyway, this calendar year. We had looked at adding in a district contribution for employees who have families or spouses, since we currently cover just the employee portion of the insurance. And these are our new updated current rates that we're paying for our employees. So, um, this just kind of breaks it out, but.
Explain it, please.
That's what I'm doing. Um, the district's cost in each category, if the, if the district were to contribute zero percent, this is our cost. And employee, obviously, is zero percent. So, um, right now, we're at, they pay, um, half and we pay half, basically. It's equal. So this column here is what the district would pay for each of these people, and this column here is what the employee would pay. So this is current, because we, we contribute nothing. At fifteen percent, this would be the costs. So you can see it goes up for, um, by twenty-four thousand dollars for the PPO plan, and then eleven hundred, eleven hundred dollars for the HSA plan. And then I did the same for the twenty-five and fifty percent contributions. If you want to look at it all summed up down at the bottom down here, this is at zero percent, this is what we could pay. If we would contribute fifteen percent, it would be an increased cost of about a little over twenty-five thousand dollars. At twenty-five percent, it would be additional forty-two thousand, and at fifty percent, it would be an additional eighty-four thousand. And I did my.
Eighty-four thousand total?
Annual.
In, in, in additional eighty-four thousand. Yes, yes.
What, what is the total amount we currently pay? That we're paying six million and this is forty-two thousand?
No, it's two-hundred-and-eighty thousand.
We currently pay two-eighty thousand and there'll be an additional, okay, forty-two.
But it would be only, only to those individuals that would qualify.
Correct. So I did my best guess to think, to look at, okay, assuming that any employee who worked here that had a family or spouse or children, if they were to take it, that's what we would have. Some, uh, the, the, the initial feedback that I got, that even with these contributions, they still wouldn't change.
And how many total employees do we have right now?
Thirty-three.
And then we.
Oh, yeah.
So hold on, let me just, let me see if this is correct. So it would be, at fifty percent, it'd be eighty-four thousand, but only to those that would be eligible.
That's my best swag anyway. Yes.
And how many employees would that be? Twenty?
Um, there's what, ten, eleven, twelve?
So we would be impacting.
Fifteen for twelve, yeah.
Of our workforce by offering this benefit. So again, two-thirds would receive no additional benefit, no additional value.
Correct.
And just so you know, the conversation that we had with our broker was if we were to kind of stagger this, the first order would be to, like, family, like the chi, the, the family option with children. And then, like, maybe the next year have the offer as the spouse, um, just because of rates and claims and things like that. But, um, this was one option, and then the other option, if you want to jump to the FRS option.
You said thirty-three. How did, I see on this twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Not everybody takes insurance, and we have four part-time people. So not everyone, not everyone has insurance.
Okay, so but also not on one of the eligible. So if you're part-time, you're not eligible.
Correct. And there are some employees that don't take the insurance.
So do they get a benefit?
Nope. Get nothing. All right, so.
Do they have spouses that cover?
Yeah, I would be one of them. Um, so this is, we had looked again at, at doing FRS. If I look at people, these are all the employees who are currently participating in our four-fifty-seven plan.
What's FRS?
Uh, Florida Retirement System.
Okay.
Pension.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so not all of our employee, um, the, we have a lot more of our employees who are participating, but not everyone who's eligible to, which is all full-time employees, participates in the, in our four-fifty-seven. So right now, um, we did add in the tiered system this year. So you can see, um, this, under this column here, this four-fifty-seven, ER is employer, EE is employee. Some are now getting a four percent match or a five percent match. So thank you for that. This is the first year that we've been able to do that, increase that match. So this was all three percent last year. Um, the match for FRS is thirteen-point-five-seven percent. So, uh, the increased cost to us, if all of these employees and only these employees would participate in the FRS would be an additional, additional one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars a year. So that's not really, in my mind, yes, it'd be awesome, but it's not really fiscally responsible.
So one of the things we talk about is equal benefit to everybody. This provides that. In my experience, even when I was at the town of Fort Myers Beach, you talk about recruiting. A lot of, a lot of municipalities have and offer FRS, and so people are unwilling to jump ship to a non-FRS entity, because then they lose their, their vest, their vesting. So from a recruiting standpoint, this would be fantastic. That would open up many doors to our municipal counterparts, but.
Part-time people can participate in it.
And one question. So the thirteen, uh, fifty-seven, where does that come from? Is that a base? Is that a baseline?
Yep, that's flat. It's a flat fee.
So it's thirteen regardless.
Period. Yep.
So we have to, we have to match, or is that just what they put?
That's, that's our cost.
Our cost is thirteen.
So right now, like for Isaac, we, it's three thousand dollars a year. If we switch to FRS, it would be ten. That's the employer part.
And the, and the benefit of FRS?
It's a pension.
Okay, it's pension versus.
A four-fifty-seven B.
Yeah, four-fifty-seven, okay.
Right. And it would be available to all, all staff, including part-time employees.
Is that, is that a hundred percent vested right now?
I don't remember. I haven't talked to them for a year, so I don't remember.
So does this level the playing field?
Star of the employees.
Yeah, there's normally a time period that before you get that.
Which again, it's worked to our advantage.
I think.
Our current one, we don't have one.
I think what we have to look at is.
It's a tool we could use.
We've got benefits, um, and incentives. Uh, and maybe you can say that the FRS or the four-fifty-seven is a, uh, is a benefit more than an incentive, but regardless. I think what we're trying to do is position the district as an employer of choice, or, you know, good place to work, good pay, good benefits. Looking at our staff and based on your numbers, we've got people in all different types of, of categories. So I think we need to figure out how we can, uh, kick as many buckets as we can for those that want, you know, almost like a little bit of an a la carte. And I don't like the idea of saying, if you have a family, you get additional benefits, whereas if someone that doesn't, you don't get anything. Maybe you can offset that, you know, in other ways, but maybe I, one of the companies I work for, that's you, you got a certain dollar amount. So you got like, uh, let's say eight, eight thousand. And it is based on your, your, you know, your, uh, your level, uh, anywhere from three to five to eight to ten to twelve. And then you could leverage that money either for, uh, insurance benefit dollars.
You could work, Doug.
Dental care, whatever, whatever you want to do, or I care.
Benefits, uh, or, you know, that would be, you know, um, a payout over time. If you said, look, I don't want any of that. I, I just, I want to take the eight grand and just, you know, sub, you know, subsidize. At least that way, there's parity across the board. And we're addressing total, um, uh, total employee, um, area as opposed to just one or two. So that's what I'd like to think about is how do we, how do we offer as much benefit around, uh, around the horn? Because we're going to still have to continue to be competitive with, uh, with our rates. We haven't, uh, I can't remember what we agreed to this year for any type of merit or just performance increase. What do we bake in?
We did bacon four. I usually do four.
We did four. So we budgeted four percent, which is good. So these are all things that we need to be thinking about. And this is really great information, because it gives us an idea of what the cost is going to be. But I would hate to invest a hundred thousand dollars for roughly, you know, ten employees, when the others benefit nothing. So that's not an incentive to keep.
Daniel said, um, he just messaged me, a hundred percent invested after, a hundred percent vested after eight years for FRS.
Eight years? That's pretty good. That's a stiff number.
We have quite a few employees who've been here that time.
But the average is probably not that.
But, but if you have.
If you stay.
That's an incentive.
It's an incentive?
Well, and for recruiting as well, because if they come from the county or the city where they're already in, FRS, they just come, everything comes with it.
Like Nathan, he wouldn't get it.
Then Chelsea, given the employees that we have right now, which of these two is more important to them?
Yeah, these are two separate things, right?
These two separate things.
You have a, we have a very.
I, I think the majority of the people who are not on this list would prefer the insurance, and the people who are in the insurance would, who are on the other would prefer this list, so it's kind of split.
I would say fifty-fifty.
But at the same time, I think if you're young and you don't have a family, you want this money invested either, either in a four-fifty. Either, either in a four-fifty-seven or, or an, and an FRS. Like my son, for example, the FRS would probably motivate me, because he's not going to, uh, more than likely, he's not going to stay.
He'll never get the eight years.
Right, he'll never get the eight years. But the four-fifty-seven, it starts building a habit of, of investing in your.
But he doesn't have that opportunity to invest in four-fifty-seven now.
Because he's part-time. Yeah, I'm just saying, but if he was, I, I was using just his age.
So the four-fifty-seven is a program? Is it slowly catching up?
Yeah, it's a retirement program.
Like a four-on-one.
But FRS, you have to do, it's all or nothing, right?
Yes.
You, you can't opt into.
You can't have the four-fifty-seven and the FRS.
We don't have either of these right now. Is that correct?
We have, we have a four-fifty-seven B.
Seven.
We have a.
We match it.
EE. And we're talking about ER or fifty-seven ER?
No, EE is employee. ER is employer.
This is a pension plan. We currently have a, it's like a four-on-one, but it's a four-fifty-seven B. And where I put in, the district says three percent, because I've only been here less than five years. If I put in three percent, the district will match my three percent, and it goes into an investment portfolio, and it goes up and down with the market.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So.
That's, that's disappointing. So we're matching a hundred percent up, up to three percent.
Or four, or five, depending on the time.
Can the employee, oh, the employee, okay.
Employee can put in more.
They can put in more. They can put in as much as they want, but we'll match up to five percent.
And what's our vesting time on that?
It's immediate.
Immediate. So wherever you put in, you can get it.
So we have.
We had stocks.
How many positions? Forty-three, forty-two?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Or thirty-six if everybody's fired.
And there aren't thirty-four names on here.
No, I said not everyone participates. Not everyone is eligible either.
Just full-time.
So four is right off the bat, the part-time people are not eligible.
For this retirement thing.
No, for our four-fifty-seven. This is based on the people who are currently participating.
But if we move to the.
FRS, yeah.
FRS.
They would be eligible. Correct. All employees would be eligible.
And what would that expense be?
I didn't figure that out.
Can you have that for us next time?
How's the time, uh, go? Same for a part-time versus others on the term, like eight years?
I would have, I don't know. I, I haven't talked to them. I said it's been over a year, so.
It's a different question. A four-fifty-seven B is a governmental equivalent of a 401K. So you have a plan, and, and the question is whether or not you can have shorter or longer timeframes for vesting.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
And, and I guess the question would be, if you go from FRS to the four-fifty-seven, then the vesting issue is. And, and I guess the question would be, if you go from FRS to the four fifty-seven, then the vesting issue is no longer an issue, correct? It gets immediate.
Yeah, four fifty-seven B is immediate, FRS is, that's another eight years.
I mean, I think FRS is great for the city, the county, the town. I think in our organization, I lean more towards the four fifty-seven B. It gives more flexibility. Because I think if you, if you were to look over the past fifteen, twenty years of how many people that have worked for us that have stayed in government or municipality, I'd say it's probably less than half. I, I don't know that for a hundred percent, I'm just absolutely spitballing. Plus, we can match, you know, we have more flexibility with match and we wouldn't have to invest quite so much at a thirteen point seven percent. I mean, that's just mine, and I don't know if we'd want to jump into that. It's a pretty big jump. I don't know, but something to think about, but this is good, this is good information to, to continue.
Well, I would like to move to the FRS because I think you're going to keep people.
We just need to know the total amount of everybody.
Right.
Right, so yeah, I think that's a good, get that and then cover the.
But right now, it's a hundred and fifty-two excluding part-time.
Correct, this, it's excluding everyone who's. Plus full-time people that do not enroll on the program.
But if you took all thirty some odd, which you would have to do for the FRS and at least offer it to them, you don't know how many would take it or not take it or whatever. And they do have the option to not take it.
Correct.
But they wouldn't get the money.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, I don't know why they wouldn't.
It's free money, yep.
Um.
And the FRS, we're only talking about our portion. They're putting their own money, of course, they're always going to get that.
You'll get both.
Well, unless they're not vested, they wouldn't have that.
If there's another pension in the family, they may not want to take this.
I like the FRS also.
Yeah, they lose the, the, the employer investment contribution if they don't stay for eight years, correct? With the four fifty-seven, whatever we contribute is theirs right away and they take it with them.
Yep, yep, yep.
That's why I like that.
It just seems like the district has kind of had a history of being a great training ground for people and at a certain point, then they leave.
That's not going to change.
And I, but if we keep, if we keep FRS, it might.
It's real incentive to stay.
It's incentives to stay.
FR, I will tell you, FRS, I, in my years of recruiting, both at the beach and here, I have had easily ten conversations of, oh, you don't offer FRS, I'm not leaving where I'm at then.
And that's people coming from the county and the city.
Any, yeah, most municipalities.
They currently have the FRS.
Yeah, yeah, most municipalities have it and that vested is.
Just sounds like it is what it is.
Key, so. Something to consider, Laura will crunch the numbers and bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Alright, Tony, I, just so the board knows, I have to leave at five, um, but I will join remotely. I have to go catch a plane.
Let's knock this out.
Run, run fast.
Let's all leave it on.
Yeah, I, this is a first, this is a first iteration draft that, that provided it to the attorneys for Stony Brook. And I think March thirty-first, I received comments back this week, substantial edits. And I'm not going to go over those edits now because I've not had a chance to really digest them and or talk about it with Chelsea. I think, is Mr. Levin on the call?
I am here.
Thank you, Alan.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
He's with the Becker Law Firm and they represent the Stony Brook, they're with Master Association. And Katie and Ellen have been working on this and we've had some good conversations so far. Uh, and they, they took this draft to the, to the board of Stony Brook and, and some edits and revisions were made and I've not had a chance to review. But I wanted to get some board input today, uh, through what's in your element early because that way we'll work together with Stony Brook and with staff to come up with a draft, present to board on May first, is it? Uh, and then circulate this to U.S. Home. That's the concept, I want to get some of the board's feedback or input on what they thought of some additional items might need to be addressed or considered.
Do we want to let, um?
So what, my concern is what happens to the O-O four money?
Well, the question is, well, how much is left at the time this transaction occurs? Right now, the draft says we're trying to close this by June fifteenth.
Correct, so let's say June fifteenth happens.
Yeah, and say there's money in the O-O four fund.
Yep.
Then you can't really credit it back to the property owners because different property owners paid at different points in time. As I mentioned before, what, I think we talked about that this year's budget and assessment that to the extent there would be a general fund assessment number for the properties in Stony Brook, that these monies would be applied to reduce that overall aggregate amount.
Credit it.
Not the individual ones, but the aggregate assessment number for Stony Brook. I think that's the only equitable way to.
But in the interim, they could spend it if they also.
That's what I want to touch on. So one of the other things, in preparation of this, um, staff met with the Stony Brook HOA reps. They have put together a list of items that they could foresee to be projects between now and June fifteenth to accomplish, to spend down some of this money, some of it being, um, repaving a road, sidewalks, um.
Does it have to be dedicated or spent?
But it has to be spent before they own it. And that, and I guess what we could do is if we're comfortable that it's actually going to occur past June and we are, we're on the path to expend it based upon various contracts, have the closing or, or the conveyance at a later date, push it back to August or so, or before the end of the fiscal year, so that it is spent down by the end of the fiscal year.
What does that do on the, uh, assessment methodology involved or, uh? Reses, calculations.
The only, the only change would be of the roadway assessments for the baseline.
I was going to say the baseline would be gateway, not.
Russ, what, there would be no, technically no O-O four. And so Russ would be looking at the Pelican budget and then the O-O one budget and determining the baseline using them.
Recalculating. Yeah, the cleanest way would be to spend it down.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
The cleanest way would be have projects and fast-track them to spend it down before the date of the conveyance.
And I'm sure there are projects in Stony Brook.
Oh, they want to give a list.
And Alan, I think you, you all agree with that, Alan, that concept, or Stony Brook?
Absolutely, and my, and, um, thank you for bringing up the fact that my client has, um, met with the CDD to discuss some of those projects. But as Tony says, uh, what's important is to know exactly how much is left in that fund. Do we know that?
Yes, don't ask me on the fly though, I don't have it off of the fly on the fly.
What we get on Monday, Alan, how's that?
Perfect.
Okay, a little over three hundred thousand, Laura will get the number to you, all of us on Monday.
Yes.
Because they're closed tomorrow.
Three hundred thousand is not a big number to have to worry about. You do a couple of roads.
Code G, you've used it quickly.
Yeah.
Put an iteration. Yeah, and so, and so again, I do appreciate Katie and Ellen and the Stony Brook folks working on the documents. They have a number of changes, uh, some of them look more, uh, greater than they really are. Once you dive into it, somewhere I'll have some questions about, uh, we'll work through those and the idea of bringing back on May first, a document that you all can approve to go forward, to give to U.S. Homes and start this path, to have this conveyance.
Does U.S. Homes have any thoughts on this that are something that we ought to talk about? Or are they just riding along and getting this approved and if Stony Brook's happy and we're happy, they're happy?
I've not talked to Charles in a while, I don't know what Charles meant, I don't know if Katie or Alan have. But generally, the concept was similar to the approach of Pelican Reserve on the emergency access road. Basically, if it doesn't cost them anything.
Charles seen this yet?
No, again, the idea is to have us agree.
Agree to it first.
And then pass it on to Charles.
Yeah, because I'd, I'd su- it's just assume, get their, uh, comments on this as quick as possible so we don't have any, uh, deals thrown in at the end of the.
Yeah, and the idea is to have U.S. Homes in the solely for the purpose of agreeing to execute the quick claim D. Very simple, and that would be the only task and the only obligation. Alan, is that a correct summary?
That's a correct summary.
The idea was to minimize that because again, the experience we had with the, uh, with the Pelican Reserve emergency road was U.S. Homes said we'll sign everything, just it's not going to cost us anything, that's our criteria. We'll, we'll assist you on this, but we don't want to put any money.
Want to pay nothing.
Yes, and that's it, and that's how we walked into this, uh, with, with Katie and Ellen and Stony Brook. So does the board have any particular comments or in between now and the next board meeting, if you have any questions or comments on it, please?
That was my only concern, was it just, is, is there anything that U.S. Homes is holding in the wings on us so that they're going to surprise us?
I'm not aware of any, they want this thing to be cleaned up and go away also. I think they, they think they've already spent too much time with Charles on it.
I agree.
Okay, and one more thing, Tony, um, on this. There are a numbers of people in Pelican Reserve that have looked on this whole process, um, for maybe ideas on how they could mimic this thing. For the record and putting it on the record today, could you please give us the differences and why this can or cannot be used as a model moving forward in Pelican?
The substantial difference is, in this instance, U.S. Homes and the district take the position, it's my opinion and Charles' opinion also, that the dedications on the plaque and the acceptance of the dedications on the plaque affected or effect, excuse me, the conveyance of the fee titled to the roads to the district. Uh, Stony Brook and their council disagree with that concept and there's, and that's the dispute. That sort of leads to the opportunity for this pre-litigation settlement agreement. In Pelican Reserve, those roads were deeded, they were actually deeded conveying the fee simple title.
So there is no dispute?
There's, you know, there's no dispute, substantial difference.
And it is owned by the CDD?
And fee simple, the tax bills come to the district. Right now, the tax bills, for example, on these roads go to U.S. Home. There's no tax bill, but they're, they're listed in the property trailer.
So somewhere in your record, you actually have a deed?
For Pelican Reserve roads? Oh, absolutely, yes. In Sonja, Raleigh, and from Arkansas, a listing of all those, we have to do an asset list every year of what's deeded out and what's deeded in.
So it's the actual ownership that is, makes the difference in everything?
Clear, clear unequivocal fee simple title.
Thank you.
Not their ownership, you know, but, yeah, it's the deeds versus the positions were taken as a matter of law. The district has title to Stony Brook roads, but in the case of Pelican Reserve, the actual deed, fee simple title was conveyed.
So we want to wrap this up and bring it to you on May first.
We'll keep moving forward. Again, I appreciate Alan being available by phone, Katie was unavailable, but we've been working on it. And I also appreciate their quick turnaround. I sent this to them on the thirty-first, they got with their clients, they came back with their comments and we'll have grants of easements and also, uh, for quick claim D.
I think it's the first agreement I've ever read that has more whereas's than it does.
Compared to the exhibits.
Try, try to lay out the predicate as to why we're doing it this way, yes, sir.
Any, any comments on this?
No.
Alright, Tony gets to work on all the exhibits.
I appreciate Laura.
Thanks, Alan.
All right, thank you, folks.
I'm trying to get, trying to get us up here at five.
Alright, you ready? Alright, uh, next up is district manager evaluation. I did not get any feedback from any of you. Um, Doug, you sent it to Chelsea, but I asked her to send it to me because I'm compiling it, but that's okay, she sent it to me. So, Doug, I got it from Doug through Chelsea, but I didn't get any feedback from anybody else on the form.
My recommendation was to simply change.
I gave it to Chelsea as well, you didn't say?
She said, this is the best one ever.
My recommendation was to change the rating scale from, um, satisfied, whatever, to meets.
See if you want to.
Meets exceeds, yes, because that's more quantifiable. The other one is, you know, when you talk about, you know, it's more feeling-based, it's subjective, so it, it's a simple.
That's a simple change.
Yeah, I think it's just better.
One of the things that was brought up last year when we used the evaluation tool that you have right now is that that is the same evaluation tool that you use for all employees of the district. That's what you told us last year. Now, this would be different, right?
This is specifically to you. It's only for the district manager.
And what are you going to use for everybody else in the district then?
We're using what we did last year, I think we're going to tweak them, we learned a little from using it last year. But, um, there's, there are two, we did two different forms. We did one, um, of, one format was for managers because obviously there's different expectations for managers uh, than there are for the hourly employees. So they, they had a review form for hourly that was more tailored to an hourly position. And then there was the salaried reviews that were more for the salaried employees and the manager employees. So, well, based on some of the feedback we got and some of the things that we learned while we filled those out last year, we'll be tweaking them slightly as well, but they are significantly different from what you're doing for her.
One of, one, like I did last year, I put together a list of accomplishments. Um, I'm actually making that into like a district's year, like a book. So I will have that for you at, um, the meeting that you do the review.
But we do need specifically like, here's, because in, the way you lay it out, here's the district's goals and then here's your goals that tie into those, we need to see what those are.
Yep.
And then, um, again, your accomplishments. That way we can say, you know, we know what they are, but if they're written down, then we can.
I'll give you both, I'll give you the bullet point list and then we're put, Randy is helping me put together a very nice twenty twenty-four. Daniel gave me the idea that he used at Pinellas, it's a, um, hope to use it, but, uh, districts accomplishments for twenty twenty-four, so.
And I want to encourage you to also fill it out because I would love to see where you rate yourself, uh, in the areas against how we rate you as well.
And could you include the job description, please?
Sure.
I think last time you included the contract, but I don't need the contract, I just want to see what the, your actual job description is.
We didn't actually, I don't think we had like the actual job description separate, but Chelsea and I went through and did all of the job descriptions from starting with this, we actually had a job.
Okay.
Other duties as assigned.
Yeah. That was always my job description.
Thank you.
So timeline for this, you'll send it out?
Next week.
And then who will be compiling?
Tony, like last year, I assume?
Yes.
And then those will need.
So you'll send them to Tony?
So you'll send a deadline and all of that. And then, um, my only thing is I will be gone the first, um. I know, but I want to meet with them individually. I will be gone the week of, um, May fifth. So, but I would love to meet with you individually prior to board meeting. Let me know your.
When's the board meeting?
Fifteen, May fifteenth.
Fifteen, yeah, alright.
Which means to get on the agenda, you have to have them all, Tony, but only seven.
She'll send the deadlines in.
I'll put it on.
If you really, if you can get it to me on the sixth, it'd be easier.
Yeah, I'll send them all, I'll send them to you next week. Thank you. That was a lot of research and looking, taking into consideration what you guys talked about during our strategy planning and the review process and all that.
I'll be there.
Alright, anything for me?
Yes, you were going to have the percentages for Pelican Reserve based on the, um, weekly time tracker. And I think you were going to include in that the, um, benefits and stuff?
Yes.
It is not in the.
It is not in the.
Okay.
Laura took PTO and that's what happened.
I did it before I left, so it was done, I just did. So I got to kind of explain the method behind my madness, this was a little difficult to do. This is actually fiscal twenty that we're looking at right now, I do have twenty-five as well. So, um, this is the first year that we tracked, we had roughly nineteen that we, out of fifty-two, it's thirty-six. What I did, this column here is the fiscal twenty-four, so that's the percentages.
That's the percentages from the staffing sheet that, um, each of us had allocated to Pelican. Um, so based on that, for the nineteen weeks, this is how many hours I expected that each, each of these positions would record against Pelican. So I did go back and I ran reports out of Paychex and these are PTO, holiday and other because we obviously don't track those on that sheet, we don't include that. So this was the total number of PTO, holiday, other hours, I multiplied that by five percent to get that here. That's what the non-worked hours are, so up to seventy hours that Chelsea had PTO or holiday, you guys got charged for three and a half. Um, and she had ninety hours of track time, so this was her total. Um, she was expected to have thirty-eight hours during that time period and she had ninety-three. So you can see it was over by fifty, almost fifty-six hours for that timeframe. Um, Daniel wasn't as bad because he had some, he was, had leave and things that he was gone from military stuff, but he went over by nineteen hours, actually, that is bad. Um, I went over by ninety, uh, Randy went over by thirty-five, Georgia went over by seven and a half. Julie was under, um, Nathan went over, Mark was way over, two hundred and thirty-eight hours. Uh, Al went over by eleven and a half, Stephanie was under by four and a half, maintenance went over by fifteen and then landscaping was under by twenty-eight. So overall, for the hours that we expected to have for this timeframe, it was over by four hundred and five hours for that nineteen weeks.
When you have like Chelsea, five percent, five percent of what, twenty-eighty?
Yes.
Twenty-eighty-five percent is not thirty-eight.
No, because it was only nineteen hour, or nineteen weeks, so it was the whole year.[1766.54] No, because it was only 19 hours or 19 weeks. So it's the whole year. This is a partial year. So this is, this, no, 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 that's, this is like, if you look down here, I have 19 weeks times 40 hours is 760. So it's actually 5% of 760. And so then these are the hourly rates. So this is the actual cost to Pelican. So there was, this is just the amount of salaries that should have been charged or that were charged. And then this, I did the fringe based on down here. I took the, these, this was the salaries. This is from the financials. So this is what you actually were charged.
This year in 24.
This is year in 24. So for salaries, overtime bonuses, and then I put in taxes, retirements, and then the health and life insurance. And then I got the percentage down here to determine the fringe, and that's how I charged that in. So you had a total cost of actual hours worked, holiday, whatever, of $77,000, and you only char, were charged for almost $50,000. So you had a savings in just that 19 weeks of over $28,000 in free labor from the district. So that was for 24. So now we'll go to 25. This is 25. So we're almost half, well, halfway. I run the payroll reports at the end of the year, so that, or at the end of the month, after the end of the month. So this is as of March 31st. You can see we're significantly under for most of the people. Chelsea's close. She's got an hour. Daniel cut way back in his time over there, and he was gone quite a bit. I also have been trying to turn mine back, so I'm down to just 12 hours under. You can see, as expected, the biggest savings in time is Georgia and Julie, which based on the efforts of Pelican to cut back with all the committees and the purchase orders and to streamline things, you can see that is definitely having an impact on our staff time. Nathan was a little bit under, and I mean, most of the people were pretty close. Mark, Al, me, Chelsea, we're all relatively close. So based so far this year, and I have a note down here, I finally got the health insurance bill, so I have not, we have not had any health insurance or life insurance or anything charged against us since December. So I have four months that's going in. So when I run this for April, this is going to change quite a bit. But using the same logic, you basically had a cost of about $87,000 worth of time. You were charged for 118. So right now, you're, you technically overpaid about $31,000 so far this year. Combine that with the $29,000 that you underpaid for the previous year. Right now, it's about a wash. So.
And we still have.
Six months to go. Yep.
Can we get a copy of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
You go to page 255 of the attachment, the admin hours. Go to any, any page. Go to Chelsea to start with. Okay. I corrected assuming in this particular week, the very first thing, the number of hours was four hours and the percent was 9.8.
Yep.
And then the next week was 5.0.
Yep.
And the next week was 8. Whatever.
Eight, yep, and 8.9.
That doesn't come in over here 20%.
That's not for her. That's overall.
No, this is hers. Go to the next week.
I'm not saying 20% per person. I said overall of all of the tracked hours, you guys are using 20% of all tracked hours, not hers individually, not mine individually, overall.
They were all flat, you know, like they, they were up and down.
Right.
But overall, total, the 70% that was agreed on, that's what she's talking about. That's what Highland understood too.
Yep, okay.
You don't get 20%. I don't spend 20% of my time.
Like for, for example.
All of us added together.
Right. Of all of the people tracking hours, you get 100% of the maintenance. You get 40 hours. You get 100% of their time. So it averages out between Chelsea, Daniel, me, all of those people that I showed on that list, all of the people that have sheets here, of all of us that are tracking our time, so far this year, of the total tracked hours, that's adding up general fund, Pelican, Stony Brook Utilities Fund, the percentage of the total hours being used by Pelican is 20%. And that's only for the actual hours that we are physically doing things for Pelican. That does not include PTO, holidays, none of that. That's just the hours from this sheet, these sheets. If you add all of them up and you look at the total hours for Pelican for the year versus everybody else.
See, the thing I struggle with is whenever we have agenda items on here where it tells the projects we're working on. If I look at any list of projects, whatever, anyone you want to look at, whether it's Tetra Tech, or Tony, or whoever, and I look at those numbers, there's very few things that have to tell it. Yet everybody's working their butts off for it. I, I have a real disconnect. What are priorities and our projects show 11, 12, 15 items, and two of them are Pelican, and you're telling me you're, you're overspending on them.
Is it meeting? Is it meeting with?
There's, there's day-to-day operations stuff. I mean, there's follow-up, there's meetings, there's processing payments, there's phone calls, there's emails, there's agenda items. There's, it's the constant. You can't base it just on projects.
Well, I'm not, because if it's just on projects, it's 5%.
And there, I mean, there's things that you ask for them to do over there. There's the pressure washing, there's the painting, there's all of that.
Pressure washing is, is 100% for our guy. We get 40 hours a week. That shouldn't enter his at all.
But that's included in the total hours. So those 40 hours a week that they.
But I never, I never question that.
Anyone who's tracking hours.
Questioning the 11 salary people, not the hourly guy that's, that we know we're paying 100%. That's not part of the equation. Now, if you're throwing them in there, then yeah.
In your updates?
I feel like it is. This is inadequate what I'm giving.
Okay, so Chelsea, what is in the budget for Pelican? Is it 5% for you?
Yeah, this year, I think it's five.
Five? So if you look at it, it makes.
Well, hang on.
So right now it's 5%. You see what I'm saying? So overall.
It depends, it depends on how you're looking at it.
But if you want to break it down, then let's break down Chelsea. So Chelsea's allocated to spend 5% of her time. So that.
Chelsea's this year is 10.
10, so 9.8. So it's within the, within, right? So then, so then what is the next one?
5.0.
Five, and then 8.8.
6.9.
So I mean, it flexes around. There's weeks where sometimes she may be at 15%, depending on how, what's going on.
I mean, when we were deep in the negotiations with Pelican about the, the O&M agreement and all that stuff, yeah, you put in a lot more time. I, I recognize there's variation. And this is not just totally a griping about the cost, but I don't understand how we're creating the cost. And I feel like I should understand that, because I have to explain it. And the data that I get doesn't jive with what I'm seeing.
So right now, so for this month, Chelsea spends 6.9%. Not including PTO and not including any benefit hours.
No, that's just for that week.
No, that says total. Oh.
No, that's just for that week. That's, it's by week. I don't have a total on here for.
No, he didn't. But pick any one you want. I mean, goes, do Daniels, look at him. He's, what is his percentage?
But he was gone. So that's not really, he was, he was gone for army stuff.
Well, he wasn't.
He had PTO.
Can we maybe have Bob work with staff instead of in 45 minutes talking about hours? Let's get a real debate.
We have had a lot of conversations.
Yeah, it sounds like you need to have more.
Well.
45 minutes talking about that.
Yep. So besides Bob and asking questions about the hours, are there any other questions on the admin report?
At least.
Do we want to add, do we want to add benefits? This to get to.
That's what.
Whatever she does.
So if we can have a copy of that, so we can go back to the budget from last year.
No, I had it done before I left, but it didn't make it into the board book. So it was done before I left.
If you can send that to us separately.
Because I said I would do it twice a year.
The best thing that I see out of this is the realization that the effort to reduce hours.
It's working. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Do what? Oh, you want to print it?
Is there anything else for the admin budget?
No.
Nothing else for admin? All right. Anything for public works?
I have, can we have Carrie work on that programs and event plan? I don't need a full, like what we're going to do, but we've kind of talked about it a couple of times, and I still don't know. But we have anything specific for her? Like, I want to see what that plan looks like, how we're going to promote programs and events.
I believe they talked about it at the last frac meeting, but it, she was tasked with.
I mean, because that's, frac really has, it's her responsibility. If she wants to leverage the Parks and Rec Committee, that's fine, but that falls under her remit. And I'd at least like to know what her plan is and when we think some type of output or execution would come. And I'm fine if it's like, we have to have the amenities first before we do it, but.
We have an idea.
Okay.
For, for public works, to save the supervisor time, can we have Stephanie come out to Gateway Greens, I don't know what, 15, 20 ponds, and do an inventory of those 20 ponds. Walk the ponds, then come back and tell me what her vision is of what needs to be done. They did come in and they did some spray, but several of the ponds they haven't touched. We got stone that is a significant problem in several of the ponds.
Do you mean point repairs?
Point repair.
We have a laundry list of point repairs that they've been soliciting proposals for that have done in the next month.
Okay, can we, I see those so that I can compare it with what I've got. And I would like to have somebody come out and explain. I thought that after Rod's deal, there would be pretty well, somebody from, and this is Metower, I take it, somebody would have been out there and make sure every one of those ponds have been sprayed. Bullshit. That grass is as green as can be. They were not sprayed. Now, what I have a feeling they're doing is they're not getting out of their car and going out behind houses and seeing that there's a lake there. If you're going to do it from the, the deal, the only way to do it on the, is to walk it. Walk it on the golf course. And if they walk past these seven or eight houses, they're blind in one eye and can't see out of the other. I mean, the weeds are growing up. Now, on some, they didn't spray, and you can see it. But others, I, that's why I wanted to see, somebody from staff needs to go out there and look at this stuff and verify that it is being done. And if it's not being done, go back to Metower and ask them what the hell does all mean to you? Not part of them, all of them need to be done. Because I'm hearing from people saying, you got yours sprayed, I didn't get mine sprayed. So we, we just need to check that. And that would be a real good thing for a step in for her if she's going to be moving into that, that position in two months. That's all I have for her.
Take one pass of time.
Take one pass of time.
Any public works?
No. Pond projects going good.
Is this your last meeting? That will have Danny or no, no one more?
Yes.
Short timer.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that's the word when you sign up three years.
Good luck, Daniel.
Yes.
Thank you for everything.
And thank you for your service.
I will be joining online.
All right.
All right, Bill. Any questions?
Anything for Bill?
Bill, are you up to speed on this new piece of equipment that we just approved for Stony Brook on the order control?
I have seen the paperwork on it. When they install it, they are going to have to teach us about it.
I don't have anything bothering other people, Bill? All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
You don't have to hang around. I'll lock up. Oh, he will. If you don't want to hang around, you don't have to. I'll lock up. It'll begin to 6:00 p.m. every.
He's been sick, that's why.
Oh, okay. All right.
Tony.
Yeah, quickly, just highlight some of these ones that were completed. I've taken them off here. But on the public records request, I guess it's sort of generic, but two items popped up in the last month. One was on one of the bids for access control for Stony Brook. Some, a third party who was not a bidder requested all the bids. And one of the bid documents, the bidder had stamped, marked every page as being confidential. Now, under Florida law, there, it's very, well, the difficulty is, it's, the way we addressed it was Laura sent an email to the party who stamped all of them and said, we have a request for your records. We're going to let you know that you have until such and such a date. You can ask a court to prevent us from giving them to this person. That's sort of following some guidance that they turned generals off escape. And what we're also going to do, talk to Randy, we'll get Laura and Chelsea, in all bid documents on a go-forward basis, we're going to say, you know, folder print on the public records law, you don't determine what is confidential. There are some provisions in Florida statutes for trade secrets, proprietary financial information. We don't care what you stamp or mark. We will make a decision. You're unknown. On a go-forward basis, we'll take care of that. Also, Pelican Reserve Gate House, somebody wanted to videotape from there. That also is exempt. There's court cases and attorney generals.
I, just so you know, I took a call from him today, and I ended up basically telling him, thank you. Consider this closed. If you find any different information, please let me know. And I hung up. So.
And we did provide the information to the law force, which is allowed. The Janobi Master Agreement for Services, I think Zach and Chelsea and Laura are going to get together with the parties for, I think in the next week to try to.
I hope so, yeah.
It's a liability issue, insurance issue. Because we're concerned about cybersecurity and liability. Irrigation Meter, Stony Brook Village, I've been chasing Alyssa and Charles Mann and Westinghouse. I'm seeing the US Home to get that done. I'll keep pursuing them. Stony Brook Roads and Streets, you already heard online on that, the update on that. San Luis Drain, I'll give you a call, give you an update after that. I'll go into greater detail. There's, I think there's a possible solution, but. Storage Tank MOU lease, what's going on with that, Laura, do you know, with Lee County? I drafted it and just putting feedback and comments.
I haven't heard anything.
I'm waiting on the county.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Says the goddess from the ceiling.
She's the voice from the sky today, instead of me.
And then the Daniels Parkway Apartments, we, the upsizing agreement was provided to them. Lee, correct me if I'm sure if the, Chelsea, that was provided, I think, to Daniels Parkway folks.
Correct.
We don't have anything back from them yet on that. On the well agreement, I finalized the draft and gave it to staff this Monday. They have been quickly turning it around, and I have comments back even today from Austin on that. And that's one where it'd be temporary irrigation wells until such time as the lines are closer or they hook up in a different way. We'll keep moving forward on that.
What do we have on Fairway Lakes Office Park?
Oh, what?
Did that just die?
Yeah, I've got nothing further. No one's ever contacted. It's just the strangest darn thing I've seen.
So they're sitting there with a quarter of a million dollars that they can split up, and they're not doing anything.
The court said that one corporation has this money. It's in the registry of the court. And after a certain point in time, the clerk who maintains the registry will have unclaimed funds, and the clerk may end up sending it up to the state to hold it in part revenue so other people can make. It defies logic. It defies common sense. I agree.
Can anybody lay a claim on it?
No.
I'd be happy to do that.
It is silly.
I have one question for you, Tony. The awareness of the two parcels or single parcel between, this is an easement question, that the, the way we have laid out Tree Line Boulevard corridor, district is going to be responsible for everything except the two plots at the front of Colonial and Tree Line, and the portion of the sidewalk on the Pelican side, from the edge of the sidewalk, the fence. And that portion has always been handled by Pelican and E O Two, but we now learn that that land is Pelican Reserve Community Association. We need to get the maps and the easement as ASAP so we can get them to sign off, and then maybe we'll conclude our easement issues in Pelican.
Yeah, open the next list. You mentioned it to me today. I sent an email out to Will, you and he and I to get together and call next week to lay it out.
Tony, we already have the maps.
You do?
I just got them today.
Oh, can you send it to me?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I've got, I've set up a meeting with Fay, and I just want to get them to, and I'll talk to Jim Bolinger to make sure that they're aware of it. They can always say no, in which case they take it over. Okay, we're good with that.
Oh, one other thing that's not on here, I'm sorry. I, I know there's been discussion at the board level about e-bikes and issues and safeties and items and that. The legislature has allowed counties and cities to adopt regulatory schemes for that. Tyler County next Tuesday is considering an e-bike ordinance after that death, that accident occurred, which was two lots from my house.
An e-bike ordinance?
Yes. And so if you want, I can send it to you. If you want to send it to your county.
I'd love to see it.
Yeah. And again, they're considering next Tuesday.
Send it to LCSO.
Yeah, the county, well, it, the county.
County, right?
It's a county issue and, and or the city. And the county commissioner that spearheaded this is a former law enforcement officer, Dan Call. He said enough is enough. So, yeah, my neighbor heard. So I'll send it to the board. If you all want to contact your commissioners, or the board as a whole, contact commissioners in Lee County on January 1st. That's all.
Do you have a manager? If anybody has any questions for Chelsea?
Just a reminder, we have the president's council on when? 24th? Yeah, Wednesday?
Do we have an agenda for that?
It should have been pushed out today. Yeah, yeah. We are working on it before we came over here. I know Georgia was going to publish it today before she left. It's at 4 o'clock, Bob.
I have 4 o'clock at the Gateway Greens clubhouse. Is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
Bob?
I will probably be at it, but yeah.
That's where the board's going to sit.
That's where I get to sit.
Yeah, just get it's.
Run the presentation. They put it on Mr. Tinkles' tab.
What's your member number?
Yeah, what's your member number?
Number 3.
Is she a member too? Is she a member too?
Well, thanks. I'm gonna, I'm gonna visit you, I'm gonna start speeding so you get the tickets.
And then our next meeting?
Yeah, definitely, you come to the Gateway, don't speed, I guarantee you.
Or if you're coming, you say you're gonna visit Ed, because he's the one that gets the tickets.
Because I will not fix your ticket.
So, and the, the May first meeting, we have the workshop, since it is the first meeting of the month, and of course, it's about the budget, and then we will also have a budget discussion during the regular meeting, and that's, that'll be the cadence going forward. Every meeting that we have will have a budget discussion area, and then each workshop will be budget, since we only really have two more, or three more meetings before we have to do the high watermark.
Okay, so since I had asked last time that we start with personnel, could we wrap up that topic under the workshop for personnel?
Yeah.
And decide, well, I'd like to have a discussion about, do we think it should be pension-related, do you think it should be insurance-related?
Do you wanna ask the employees, because I knew you said fifty-fifty?
Yeah, I'll ask again.
I, I think, yeah.
I think we need a survey, and put options.
Yeah, I did, that's what I did last time. Yeah, yeah, I just did it in, I did it in Survey Monkey, so it was anonymous.
And then, I think, I think Chelsea wanted to start into the projects list after that?
Uh, we went over that last time.
We did it?
We did capital projects last time, yep. We gave that to you at the last workshop.
That was the one that, they, just speaking for the Pelican subcommittees, they weren't involved in it.
Right, that's why I didn't think we did it.
That's because I was told that they didn't have any projects, because they were asked and they were told, I was told they didn't have any projects.
I know, but you had a lot on there.
Wait, we will bring, we will, we will bring personnel and capital back for you guys to discuss.
Yeah, we're not gonna skip parts of it, but, yeah.
Okay, and then we're supposed to have the first draft of the budget then also, right? On five-one? Isn't that what you told?
That's what I had planned, yes. I, I sent the forms out, we got the budget workbook today from Infomark, so I sent it out before I came over here today, so my goal is to have a very rough draft, there won't be calculations for impact to residents yet, just so you're aware.
Okay, but you're go, also going to have columns as to which silo.
Yep, yep, that's in there, that's why it took a little longer this time, because we had to, we had to tweak the sheet to make sure we had all that in there.
Yeah, but what, every line item.
Correct, every line item has a silo, yep, just like how, basically, there's a new column.
Yes.
So it's exactly like last year with a column to add the silo.
Okay.
Anything besides that that you want for next time?
Are we gonna get the five-one budget prior to the meeting?
You'll get, a week ahead of time with the agenda.
So we will get it, okay.
Yeah, but again, there will not be calculations in there, it's not gonna tell you what the impact is to Pelican or Gateway, that will not, that will not come until later.
I, I wanna start looking at the silos, to be honest with you.
Yep.
That's what I wanna start.
All right, anything else?
Supervisor comments?
Tony, you have your mind.
No.
Ed?
None.
Carol? Yes, there has been some correspondence, particularly from Fay from Moser, about the back gate at Pelican Reserve, and someone, some entity or somebody from Pelican having the ability to open it. And I don't know, I, I understand that numerous people have asked the district for the ability to open that gate, but it's always been denied and said that the district will do it. I don't know, though, what the process is, I do it.
Is called?
We, we did a.
No, I mean, is it, does it have to be an evacuation?
No, the process is that when security leaves the community because of a hurricane or something.
Right.
Then when security is gonna go, and we call the district, they've got people and they will come over and open that gate.
We laid out a plan that specified exactly when it would get open, who to contact and how, yeah, it's documented.
Could you just share that with Carol?
Yeah, I'll find it, I will get that.
And could you share it with the community association?
They've had it in the past, but yes, we'll do it again.
What opens the gate?
A clicker.
So do we have a list of who's got clickers?
Staff.
Only, only Gateway staff.
That's what we agreed on.
Well, we didn't have a choice about agreeing, that's the way we got the permit. The permit was.
But that, that, those keypads are just there for aesthetics, there isn't even any power to them.
So bottom line is, is nobody's got a clicker, which means nobody should be getting in.
Correct, unless they're tailgating somehow, but.
And if I can chime in, if I can chime in, the, this has been asked in the past, and because they are controlled by clicker, and typically, we lose power in a hurricane, staff have to go manually turn off the power to that prop, secure the gates in open position, both gates, so that's why giving a clicker does nothing, so.
Chelsea, doesn't it have a battery backup, because like, my gate, I, I have, that's what I'm saying, I have mine, if I lose power, they'll be on for, I think, two hours, and after that, for safety, the, the battery's dead, which automatically opens the gates.
Yeah, we do.
It doesn't even require staff to do anything.
I don't know if the gate will automatically open once the battery runs down, but I do know that they do have battery backup on them.
All right, well, it sounds like we have a policy.
So just share.
I would just like a policy to be shared.
Okay.
Well, the real problem, Carol, is people that read the policy don't like it.
I know.
Yeah, but as Bob mentioned, one of the, one of the key factors of the city approving it was district maintained control.
Yep.
Yep.
I only have one thing, it's just a question, and, and I, I don't recall, given that the building is going up, and in the color schemes, is this building gonna be as the, is yellow as it is now, or, or, or that's just the color it came in and we're gonna paint it?
It's close, but no cigar, it's not exactly.
Well, that's what I meant, is that's just the color it comes, because we, we said we're changing the color scheme for the new building, so I would hate for us to waste the money on painting this yellow when we're gonna change it a year down.
To green, or whatever.
That would probably be a Chelsea question, I honestly don't know.